We're back from recess. Welcome back and good afternoon, colleagues. When we left off, we were still on the second reading. We are now on Bill number 260-37 COR. Primary sponsors under. Please proceed, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Before I proceed at this time, notwithstanding the House rules, I would like to reconsider the actions of the body in putting Bill, the Castle Doctrine bill, to the third reading. Bill 3937 is amended on the floor.
There's a motion to reconsider the actions of the body on Bill number 39. This is a motion just to reconsider. After that, we will vote on the motion itself. So on the motion to reconsider, all in favor of reconsidering, please raise your hand.
Roll call, please.
There's roll call. There's one call for roll call. All right. Roll call needs three calls for roll call. So all in favor, sorry, of Bill number, I mean, of reconsidering the motion on Bill number 39, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. Okay, that motion passes to reconsider. So we're now on Bill number 39-37 COR as amended on the floor. Senator Parkinson?
I would like to make a motion to move 3937 to the third reading for voting.
All right, on that motion, Senator Paris?
Roll call, please. Oh, object?
There's an objection. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on the motion? All right, Senator Tietzger.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, you know, the reason for most, well, some of us who feel that the process of this body is to go through with a committee report before it gets on the session floor. And this bill obviously did not have a committee report, not just for us to look through, but for also the public to be able to look at. I mean, it's one thing to not have the five-day, you know, open government law, but it's another thing to hide information from the public. I mean, that's the reason why this bill, it didn't go through the process. So, you know, I too.
Object. All right, is there anyone else on the motion? If not, there's been an objection. So all in favor of the motion to place Bill number 39-37 COR to the third reading as amended on the floor, please raise your hand. Counting nine. Motion carries. We're back on Bill number 260-37 COR as amended by the committee. Senator Parkinson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to make a motion to add Bill number 260-37 COR as amended by the Committee on Fire, Agriculture, Power and Energy Utilities, Public Transit, Unemployment Insurance, and Universal Insurance, introduced by myself, William A. Parkinson, an act to add a new Section 8108.7 of Division 1, Chapter 8, Title 11, Guam Code annotated relative to lawful operations of cannabis-related facilities, and I would like to discuss.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Bill 260-37 is a critical step forward in the advancement of our cannabis industry. This bill addresses the current requirement of mandatory lab testing of cannabis before it can be sold at retail, a requirement that, while well-intentioned, has unfortunately hindered the growth of a regulated, safe, and economically beneficial cannabis market on Guam. The intention behind mandatory lab testing is noble, to ensure the safety and quality of cannabis products sold within our jurisdiction. However, the lack of a licensed cannabis testing laboratory has led to an unintended stalemate. Retail cannabis businesses eager to operate within our legal and regulatory frameworks find themselves at an impasse, unable to open their doors to the public. This impasse deprives our jurisdiction of valuable economic opportunities and critical tax revenues that could support public health, education, and safety initiatives. The labs don't want to open because they don't know how many businesses are going to be. And the businesses, the cannabis cultivators, they cannot open because there's no lab. And we cannot go until one of them goes first. I say we let nothing rot on the vine, and we make sure that we allow these producers to produce and sell their products. And we look to other jurisdictions and neighbors to see how they did it when they had similar problems as us. I look to our neighbors in Saipan, and I am pleased to announce that we have received a letter of support from the Lieutenant Governor of the Commonwealth of the Northern Marianas, emphasizing the mutual benefits of harmonizing our cannabis laws with theirs, including the waiver of lab testing requirements. The CNMI has successfully operated a safe and reliable cannabis market without a lab testing requirement, demonstrating that such a waiver can be an effective interim solution. Moreover, Bill 260-37 has incorporated valuable suggestions from the public hearing regarding disclaimer labeling. These enhancements reflect our commitment to ensuring our consumer safety and transparency in the absence of mandatory lab testing. This measure is a pragmatic step toward establishing a regulated, safe, and economically viable cannabis industry. By enabling retail businesses to commence operations, we can stimulate the development of the necessary lab infrastructure driven by a clear market demand. This catch-22 situation where potential lab businesses hesitate to invest without a market, and the market remains underdeveloped without these labs, can finally be resolved. In the meantime, the current impasse has inadvertently bolstered the black market where untested and potentially unsafe cannabis products are sold without oversight, consumer protection, or taxation. This undermines our efforts to ensure public safety and deprives our community of significant economic benefits. In conclusion, by supporting Bill 260-37, we embrace a solution-oriented approach to a complex challenge. We open the door to economic opportunities, job creation, and increased tax revenue, while laying the foundation for a safe, regulated cannabis market that benefits all of our community. So I ask my colleagues to please let us move forward with this bill and pave the way for a prosperous and secure future for our island. I look forward to the discussion. And with that, I yield the rest of my time, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, Senator Tietzger, you're recognized. And then Vice Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, you know, as I was reviewing this bill and going over it with the author, actually since yesterday and then now this morning, on the concerns on really what the intent of this legislation is. And as the author, main author, mentioned, you know, you know, to move the industry forward, it's been stagnant for so long. And there are hurdles that the lab, the testing lab, is going through that, you know, like you said earlier, about a year ago, they said that they're going to be up and running in about two months. That was a year ago. So now the latest is that there's just one more hurdle that they have to pass through to get their certification to be licensed, and that they're anticipating it within a couple months. So as the author was mentioning on this legislation, that the intent is to allow at least the flowering, or what is also called the bud, to go through without any testing so that this market can move forward. We all know that from other jurisdictions, it provided, it provides additional funding to certain agencies, that the government and taxation. It stops the underground, you know, black market from thriving. But it's accountable. It comes with some restrictions, though, when it comes to the bud or the flower. It comes with some restrictions, like anything on a pack of cigarettes, whether the harms. And it's requiring that it at least have these particulars that marijuana contains within the package has not been tested for contaminants. Two, marijuana can be addictive and can impair an individual's ability to drive a motor vehicle or operate heavy equipment. Marijuana smoke contains carcinogens and lead to an increased risk of cancer, hypertension, heart attack, lung infection, and then in bold, keep out of the reach of children. However, Madam Speaker, and my colleagues, there are other types of cannabis uses done in edibles, also in solvents. And this is a lot more or less, you know, what's the word? Easier to pass through without actually placing on the package the strength of how much THC is in a particular edible or solvent. So I truly agree. I mean, we've heard stories about edibles. We've heard stories about how solvents like butane or CO2, you know, which is a purpose of doing this method to develop a product with a much higher THC. So if you looked at the original legislation, Section 7 actually says delivering, distributing, or selling cannabis to consumers or other cannabis business if any, if and only if there is no cannabis testing facility on Guam, that is, the ISO 1702 accredited or certified by the American for Safe Access Patients Focus Certification Program. This actually opens a door for all the products, the solvents as well as the edibles. So after having a discussion with the author, his intent wasn't to allow those particulars in cannabis to get processed through without any testing. And it was only the intent of the flower or the bud. So working with legal all this morning, we came up with a solution here to simplify it. And that is an amendment that I'm proffering, Madam Speaker, which everyone should have on their desk. It's on line 10, page, line 10 and 27, 1 through 6, pages 2 and 3. So the amendment, the amendment that I'm proffering, and that is to cross out line 7, or I'm sorry, to cross out number 7 and renumber it further down. So you're striking out delivering, distributing, or using cannabis to consume or other cannabis business if and only if there is no cannabis testing facility on Guam, that is, ISO 1702, accredited or certified by the American Safe Access Patients Focus Certification Program. So we scratched that out. And then we renumber it down below to number 7, where it says, "Prior to the licensure of a cannabis testing facility by the Guam Cannabis Control Board, the delivery, distribution, and/or sell of," underline, and then it has flowers or buds, or buds, in that, in that paragraph right there. Then on renumbering, I, we are underlining the part that we incorporated. I'll read the first part. "Upon the leisure and opening of the cannabis testing facility by Guam Cannabis Control Board, all cannabis," and this is the underlined section that we included, "and products containing cannabis by products, including flower and buds," crossing out must, going further down, "shall test as required by the applicant rules and regulations." The Guam Cannabis Control Board shall notify, and then cross out every, and put each licensee, crossing out that, "it has 10 days to demonstrate," and then we cross out, "that is compliant," and then incorporate, and then move forward with complacent with relevant testing requirements. The last sentence, the company's responsible official, the company's responsible official is responsible for demonstrating, and then this is the inclusion, "certifying and ensuring compliance." Yep, and that's, that's it, because I had the original one that actually was a two-pager, so I'm just using a one-pager here. And as I mentioned earlier again, this was something that the author, as well as legal and myself, had worked to ensure that we're not allowing those, the other edibles or other solvents to get through without testing because that have a higher concentration of THC. So that's my first amendment, Madam Speaker, that I'm proffering, and to ensure that the only thing that's bypassing any kind of testing is the flower or the bud. That's the only thing that we are passing. Or allowing to go through without testing.
All right, on the amendment. On the amendment, is there anyone who'd like to speak on the amendment? Senator Sinagastin on the amendment, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have, I'm just trying to follow the bill. And by following the amendment, it basically changes the title of the bill to, um, the bill starts out with, "relative to lawful operation of cannabis-related facilities." And basically, our amendment strikes that out and just says specifically, changing the bill totally to just say that we're, we're only allowing for the cannabis flower and bud. Am I correct? And maybe the author can confirm it or not.
Yes, exactly right.
Can you please restate your question, Senator?
Just asking her to confirm what's in her amendment. Basically, what the bill starts out with is, is to allow the delivery and, she was, you know, selling cannabis, consumer, all the cannabis business. And her amendment is to strike that out. I just wanted to hear that clearly. Because as she stated, the author states the intent of his bill, and I think the author needs to state that himself. And if the author can stand and respond to that, and either confirm or deny or whatever, reference to her statement. I asked if the author didn't stand up on this because even though she made the amendment, he's still the author of the bill.
Would the author of the bill yield to the question? What is the question, Senator?
There's a, there's a statement made by the author of the amendment stating your intent of your bill. And I need, maybe she needs to repeat her statement so that you can either confirm or deny it, so I can make sure I understand. Then, then the bill is seriously subject to changes. Let the two speak.
Would the sponsor of the amendment yield to the question?
Sure, and I'll be happy to allow also the main author to speak on this. The intent is to allow for the sale and distribution of flowers and buds without the testing needed by these labs. However, we want to ensure that that's the only thing that gets by without having to be tested. And the other ones, like solvents as well as edibles, still have to comply with any kind of testing.
Is there still a question, Senators Sinagastin?
That's correct. I wanted to hear the author explain because as I read the bill, I didn't see any problem with the bill as written. Now, as the author of the amendment is introducing, it's changing the, basically, the bill.
Point of information, Madam Speaker, if I may, to help the.
You state your point of information.
Thank you. It was brought to the intention of our legal on to ensure that when the bill was written, it was allowing all the other types of cannabis products with THC to be able to be sold and distributed without testing. And that was the first sentence that I'm striking out. So we just take that out of the equation, and we go straight to allowing flowers and buds to be able to sell and distribute without testing. But by having that first paragraph that I struck out in place without being struck out, it's allowing it. So this is the advice of legal, to do something as simple as that. So it's, so it simplifies the bill.
Then, then before you ask the question of the author, Madam Speaker, did legal have a legal opinion of the bill to start with?
You have to ask the sponsor. He has copies of all the legal opinions on the bill. And this came out of the committee on? The sponsors committee. He would have access to those.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. Could I have a moment's recess to discuss with the speaker? With the, with the current speaker?
Sure, one minute's recess. Sure, one minute's recess.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, when we left before recess, I just wanted clarity, is that, and a clarification or verification? The way the bill is written, with the amendment, it changes the bill. It changes from everything related to cannabis to now only specific. If that's the intent and the author's in support of that. But, you know, I would ask the author then, since I got his attention, and also the author of the amendment. Did you get a legal review of the bill before today? A legal review? Yes or no? That's all I need to know.
No, I did not.
Did not? So in other words, legal did not provide that service that's expected, or hopefully is given, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Then I owe, not anything against the legal, or legal, but with the author of the amendment saying that it came from legal. I was hoping that if there was an appropriate legal review of every bill that goes through, it would come up with what the problems are. It's not consistent with the current law and whatever, so that we can have a clear understanding. And then we can look at that. But with that, if the author of the bill can just explain if this is consistent with what your intent of your bill, to begin with, and then I'm good to go. I'm not saying anything against the--
I will yield to the question, ma'am.
Please proceed.
Well, when I wrote this bill, I wrote it to be as broad as possible, to encompass all cannabis as possible. But in the discussion, there has been some difference in opinion whether regarding, should we allow all classes of cannabis through, or just the flower through? And I could see the balance on both sides. You know, and I would be in support of potentially limiting it to just flower if that's where the body wants to go. Or if the body doesn't want to go that way, I'm, like, I would support the bill either way. Because I feel that both choices are legitimate. But to err on the side of caution, I would support limiting it to just flower. And so some of our discussion with my colleague Senator Tsitsigui was towards crafting a version of the bill of what it would look like if we just limited it to just flower. And I have always been kind of agnostic about the bill-writing process. I've always thought that it is a collaborative process. thought that it is a collaborative process, where we could share ideas and debate them on the floor, and get the best possible versions of bills. And so, I would support this amendment, but even if this amendment were to fail or pass, I think this is a good bill. And so, it's really just up to, how does the body feel? Do we want to go with all classes of cannabis, or do we just want to limit it to flower? And there are legitimate cases for both sides. As I am, I would stand on the side of just limiting it to flower, but I look forward to debate on this subject. Thank you. I hope that answers your question, sir.
All right. On the bill, is there anyone else who'd like to, I'm sorry, on the amendment, is there anyone else who'd like to speak on the amendment? On the Taitegui amendment? Senator Brown.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I do rise in support of Senator Taitegui's amendment. You know, and we're moving forward in this process, and the way that we're moving forward is to simply move, to remove the testing process. I mean, that to me is a bit concerning. I'm not a consumer of cannabis, nor do I have an interest, nor do I have a plan on ever being a future consumer. It's like I don't drink coffee. I just don't simply drink coffee. But I think we want to ensure the safety of our community, and the fact that, again, you know, is the caribou in front of the cart, is the cart in front of the caribou? Which, which is it? But we're looking at legislation that I assume my majority of my colleagues here want to look at passing, that simply would remove the testing requirement, because there's currently no testing facility on Guam to accomplish that. So the solution is, well, let's just get rid of the requirement. Shouldn't we just do that with everything else? Why have requirements? Just remove them, because we're not going to test at all. So certainly narrowing it down and minimizing the possibility, because with these other mixes, we don't know what's in it. We don't know who's putting it together. We don't know what level is in there. We don't know what's in there. I recall our good colleague here, Senator Barnett, mentioning yesterday, and we all heard about that situation with the students in the school. We've already heard about the problems with vaping, even though it's not allowed for these young people. Just like the same thing with cannabis, it ends up in their hands. Just like all these other drugs that we think that, you know, children shouldn't have. Some way, somehow, they end up in the hands of children. And we heard about the students that got sick. At the time, they certainly didn't report the reason why. They simply said they were vaping. Well, I don't know what they were vaping, but it obviously was enough to cause stress on them, enough that they were determined to be sick as a result of consumption of this, whatever it was that was cannabis-related, according to what was relayed by our colleague, that they were consuming. So I think in order to ensure the safety and welfare, because I don't like the fact that we're removing the testing requirements. I mean, we're just going to wait, maybe, hopefully, nobody will get sick, no big deal. But what if someone did get sick? I mean, when you walk in a restaurant to eat lunch, you're kind of always looking for that label. Did they inspect? Is this a safe place to eat? I mean, just the standard, basic, you know, preservation process, to making sure you're not going to get sick. As anyone that's had food poisoning, you don't want to get food poisoning again. It's not something you're lining up and jumping up and down to experience again. So I think in the side of caution, if that's the desire of the body to move forward with this particular bill, to simply remove testing requirements, I think it's best to ensure the safety as much as possible by reducing the options of which this material can be in that's not tested. So with that, I stand in support of the amendment, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. On the amendment, anyone else on the amendment? Not, the sponsor may close on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And, you know, I think those who are speaking on the amendment, especially the author of the legislation, I think it made it clear that we don't want to, you know, have any issues of cannabis. It hasn't even gone off the ground yet. It hasn't even started yet. And by having no testing at all, on all of them, all of the edibles, and not having testing on, on the product used, or vaping, or any kind of aspect of, other than just the natural bud itself, this is going to ruin a lot of people. This is going to put a bad light on the business. And like I said, it hasn't even got started yet. Do we really want to hear about people getting sick, using the other, you know, like edibles, or anything that was not, because it was not tested? Oh my gosh, we got legislation coming on here, testing even our bottled water, to ensure that it's safe. And here, we are not going to, you know, allow testing for things that use THC, which is considered a hallucinogenic. I, I think there's a lot of caution to this. I'm getting calls, too, from people who distribute, who are into wanting to distribute cannabis. And they don't want to start off in a bad light, at all. And they're asking, no, we're okay with just the bud, the flower. So I know many of us here in this body want to put some kind of safety precautions, and this is what this amendment does. It just allows only the bud, only the flower of cannabis, a natural substance. I mean, there, there is risks. Don't think that there's no risk in that. There's still some risks on what kind of fertilizer is used for these plants, what kind of pesticides are being used. But like the author wants to do, and I think he should be a little bit cautious, had, how badly you want this may cause some harm to people. And I'm pretty sure everybody out there listening to this is, oh my God, no testing at all. Okay, well, at least put some boundaries here. And that's what we're doing. So I ask my colleagues, we need to put some boundaries. And at the same time, you know, to get this moving, I mean, I was one of the eight that voted on recreational marijuana. Because if you ever come in a situation to see a loved one go through cancer, or medical issues, and find that cannabis was the only thing that helped them through it, then you'll understand why I'm standing up here so passionately, to make sure that this industry starts off on the right foot. On the right foot, and that's what we're responsible for. So I humbly ask my colleagues to please support this amendment. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment, is there any objection? There's an objection? All in favor, please raise your hand, in favor of the amendment.
Madam Speaker, can we have a, someone come, call in, the other senators, please?
I'm sorry, please raise your hand one more time for the clerks. Amendment fails. Seven. Senator Taitegui still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I also have another amendment. And this amendment, this amendment is on line, there are two actually. It's on the same line, seven, page three. And this is with the effective date. So I'm going to try my first amendment, see how well this one does. My first amendment basically is an act on, on section three, the effective date. This act shall be effective 180 days after enactment. The reason why we put this together, and I did talk with the author of the legislation, to see if he approved for something like this, to wait six months before it's enacted. As I mentioned earlier, we are hopeful that there's a testing lab that may be up and running within the next couple months. And this buys a little bit more time for them, so that we can continue to, you know, follow what we had planned for at the very beginning, and that is to test all cannabis products. So I'm hoping that this amendment goes through. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. On the amendment, just to clarify, it's the one that says--
180 days?
Yes, this act shall be effective 180 days after enactment.
Yes, ma'am.
On the amendment, Senator Parkinson.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I stand in support of this concept, so putting a little bit of delay on the effective date, precisely for the reasons that my colleague Senator Taitegui had mentioned, that we are hearing reports that the labs are ready any day now, and that they need a few more months, couple more months, and that they will be ready to operate. Now, I have heard this ready in a couple months, for about a year and a half now, so I take that with some grain of salt. However, I am an optimistic Pisces by trade, and so I try to be optimistic about what people tell me. And so, in the, in the effort of cooperation, I support this idea of adding an enactment date. I would just like to, just open up for discussion, though, what should be the timeline for that enactment? Because they say that they need two months before they get this lab up and running, and I take that. And so, maybe we should, instead of doing it in six months, we should consider the question of three months to delay the enactment. And so, I would like to propose an amendment, and we could discuss it, and we'll see what shakes out of the discussion. I don't know where that's going. But I think either three months or six months would be fine, and I would support either of those timelines. But I want to put, make a motion to do three months, to change, to change the amendment to three months, instead, or 90 days, instead of 180. And, yeah, that's my amendment.
There's an amendment to the amendment by Senator Parkinson, to change 180 to 90. On the amendment to the amendment, is there anyone who'd like to speak? No one like to speak? Senator, you may close on the amendment to the amendment. Senator Parkinson, you may close on the amendment to the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I think it's important to work with our partners in the private sector, who are at the forefront of this industry. But at the same time, I recognize that this has been a long-delayed industry, and that we should look for more aggressive timelines. More aggressive timelines to get this industry up, ideally before the end of the year. But that being said, if we cannot reach it at the end of the year, I am perfectly in support of Senator Taitegui's amendment. So I ask my colleagues to have a vigorous debate about whether we want to delay enactment for three months or six months. I would support doing it for three months, and I encourage my colleagues to opine and make their voice known in it. With that, Madam Chair, I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. So that was the closing on the amendment to the amendment, on the Parkinson amendment to the amendment, which would change 90 to 180 days, in Senator Taitegui's amendment. Is there any objection? Any objection? One objection. All in favor of the amendment to the amendment, please raise your hand. Changing 90 to 180, please raise your hand. In favor of changing 90 to 180? I'm sorry, yeah, 180 to 90. I've got nine. Senator, sorry, I need to see this corner again. Please raise your hands, if you're in favor. All right. Amendment to the amendment passes. So the amendment now reads, this act shall be effective 190, this amendment shall be effective 90 days after enactment. To speak on that amendment, please raise your hand. Yeah, to speak on it, Senator Barnett, then Senator Brown. Sorry, Senator Brown? We're on Senator Taitegui's amendment right now, as it was amended by Senator Parkinson. Senator Brown? Okay. All right, then. On Senator Taitegui's amendment, now reads, this act shall be effective 90 days after enactment. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, that amendment passes. Senator Taitegui, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So, well, you know, here's the reality for those who are listening. If I didn't vote for 30 days, instead of 60 days, then my amendment would not gotten through. So of course, I had to vote for, you know, the amendment to change it to 30 days, so at least we can have some timeline. Because if I didn't, guess what? There wouldn't have been any votes. And it makes me wonder, you know, any amendment that I put through, I'm not going to have the support of the, yeah, some other colleagues here, who just feel like wanting to vote no, just because it's my amendment, just like the last one. And just for the record, I just got something here on my WhatsApp, from someone I don't even know. Hafane, Senator, thank you for that amendment, which the prior amendment, there are so many issues that can occur if you get concentrates that haven't been tested. I've gotten sick a few times from locally-made concentrates. Just thought I'd share that with everyone here in this body, with the texts that I'm getting. I was from the last amendment. But other than that, you know, Madam Speaker, that was amendment that passed with 30 days instead of 60, I mean, instead of 180, 90 days instead of 180 days, which is six months. So that being said, I'm ready for my next amendment. Ready? Isn't going to anybody object? I mean, I didn't, I didn't hear if there was a call, Madam Speaker. We're just, we had the amendment, there was amendment to the amendment. Now I'm back up here--
It already passed, Senator.
Talking about the other amendment.
It already passed.
There was no objection?
That's correct.
Okay. Now moving on my second amendment. The third amendment. Thank you for that correction. At least someone's got something right. So the next one is line seven, page three. This is the effective date. The act will sunshine after 180 days after enactment.
Madam Speaker, can I get a point of clarification, point of information? Did you rule on the amendment? We only ruled on the amendment to the amendment.
No, we voted on the amendment as well. All right. Senator, what is your third, your third amendment?
Okay, thank you, Madam Speaker. Again, my third amendment is on the same line, line, but I think with technical corrections, just to, now that that last amendment had passed, to incorporate on that same line, this act will sunshine 180 days from enactment. So in other words, after 180 days, this bill no longer will apply, or this legislation, this law will no longer apply. And hopefully, hopefully this will incentivize, you know, who's ever doing the labs, or who-- And hopefully, this will incentivize, you know, who's ever doing the labs or who's putting up the labs to, you know, to hurry up and get it up and running, because then this will no longer be in existence. Thank you.
All right, so this amendment is to add this line to section 3 of the bill, to add it to the existing language that already has been amended?
Yeah, effective date, yeah, and have legal make technical corrections.
So to add it to the bill as amended, all right? So the section 3 is just amended, we're adding this to that, this is the next sentence.
With legal's technical corrections to numbering it and et cetera.
All right. On that amendment, Senator, I mean Vice Speaker?
I just wanted a point of clarification or information as it relates to the word sunshine. Is it meant to sunset or to sunshine? Because for me, I think it would be sunset if you're, she just said that after a certain date, this all goes away. So I don't think it's a sunshine, I think it's a sunset.
Absolutely right. Thank you for that, Madam Vice Speaker. So a correction would be sunset, that's a mistake right there, meant to sunset. Thank you.
On the amendment, Senator Parkinson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rose up in support of the previous two amendments, but this one I cannot support. I believe the timeline on it is too short, six months for this law to sunset, might as well just not have it on at all. But I would support, because the thing is, the bill already sunsets on its own after a lab opens up. You know, once that happens, the testing will be required of everyone once a lab is up. But if we wanted to put a sunset date in case a lab never opens up, I would be comfortable putting it on a timeline of years rather than months. So I know one of my colleagues has an amendment to put that at five years, and so maybe there's discussion to be had that maybe six months is too short, maybe five years is too long, maybe we can meet somewhere in the middle on that discussion. So at this time, I'm not going, I'm going to oppose this amendment, and I will listen to an open mind over about a five-year or potentially shorter sunset date for this bill. But I cannot support a six-month sunset on the bill despite supporting the previous two amendments. And with that, I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment, Senator Sinocci.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. A question for the author of the amendment. Are you aware that a lab could open soon? I mean, I don't know. Is it already in the works?
Will the author of the amendment yield?
As I mentioned earlier, yes, I do yield to the question. And as I mentioned several times while I've been up on the podium, that I've heard that there is a lab that is trying to finish that last hurdle, as well as the author of the legislation has heard the same thing. But hopefully, they'll be up within the next two months, but, you know, we've heard that song and dance before, so this is just to, you know, hurry them up and saying, look, you know, up in six months, because this is going to sunset. Not sunshine, but sunset.
Thank you. As a matter of fact, the sunshine part, it sunsets in election then. Thank you.
On the amendment, Senator Pitt Fisher.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. As I understand the scheme with this new amendment, the law would become effective, assuming the governor signed it today, the law would...
Point of personal privilege, Madam Speaker, there is no scheme involved here, and the previous speaker needs to put it in check.
Thank you, Senator Fisher. You have the floor.
Thank you very much. As I understand the scheme that's involved here, the...
Again, Madam Speaker, please address that, you know, my point of personal privilege as it continues to state comments like that, that there is no scheme here. It's legislation.
Ma'am, I understand that a point of personal privilege was raised. I am not referring to my friend, the senator, as a scheme. I'm referring to the process by which this is coming about, so I will continue with the speaker's permission. Yep, thank you. The way the scheme is developed, it will become effective in another 90 days? Okay, 90 days. But then it will sunset 180 days after the enactment. So there is a window open of only 90 days. I mean, obviously, 180 minus 90, the window will shut, it will sunset, as I understand the scheme, at 180 days. If that's the case, there's only 30 days open for any establishment to stand up, obtain financing, and to begin what it is they hope to do. I think all of us in this room understand that nobody is going to go into, you wouldn't be able to get one, nobody's going to go into a commercial lease for a speculative possibility that won't even run an entire year. I think, colleagues, if we are going to be sincere about this, then we must reject this latest amendment offered by my friend Senator Taitegui.
My friend?
My...
Senator, please.
Thank you. Yesterday, when we were discussing another one of Senator Parkinson's bills, Senator Duennius stood up and did Senator Parkinson, and I think they said the most compelling thing we have heard in this debate about marijuana and its sale, which is, it's a legal substance. We told people it was a legal substance. We invited them to be prepared to sell it, if that was their inclination, and then we have raised so many blocks, the Cannabis Board, whoever, we've made the process almost impossible. It feels like a bait and switch. We have told people, we have told the community that this is a legal substance, and they may gear up to sell it, and then we tell them inadvertently or advertently, we're telling them they cannot do that. That just, when the two gentlemen mentioned that, I mean, to me, that was very compelling. We have to live by our representations to the people of Guam that they may do this, and we can do it in a fashion that will be safe and that will be short-lived, because when a lab does stand up, this bill of its own weight will sunset. So I would ask, I would ask my colleagues to think about that. If we're going to give these people a fair shot at opening a business, if we're going to allow them at a minimum to score a commercial lease for at least a year, we're going to have to, this is pretty thin gruel, we're going to have to give them, I think, a little more than that. And thank you, thank you, Madam Speaker. I just ask you two colleagues to reject my friend's amendment.
On the amendment, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized? Senator Burnett, you're recognized. On the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. There's a whole lot of amendments that came at us pretty fast, so if I understand this correctly, and maybe the author can clarify if I'm not understanding it correctly, but the amendment will allow for the waiver of testing of cannabis flowers, buds, and then since her previous amendment failed, we're also waiving the testing on gummies and edibles and the vapes and the dabs and what have you, and this amendment will do that for the next six months?
Sponsor, you.
Well, unfortunately, my amendment, that would be more of a responsible amendment, did not pass, so unfortunately, yeah, that's what's going to happen. It's got 180 days of being able to not test any kind of, you know, cannabis products.
And so if I understand correctly, because it's been said by a few speakers that they've been hearing that a lab is going to get stood up in a couple of months for the last, like, couple of years or something, so it's my understanding that the amendment is taking that and saying, oh, if it's not a couple of months, maybe it's six months, and so we're going to waive the testing. I think it's reasonable, if I'm understanding the amendment correctly, which I think I am. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. On the amendment, is there anyone else who'd like to speak on the amendment? If not, then the sponsor may close on the amendment. So I'm going to read the amendment one more time. To add these words to the existing section 3 as amended, we will add the words, this act will sunset 180 days after enactment. Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for reading that out. And again, to my colleagues, and, you know, the amendment prior, the first amendment, not passing is just so disheartening. It's like, then why did we have all these rules and regulations, or why do we even have a board, a cannabis board put in place? Why even put any of these rules and regulations together? If you're just going to say, no, never mind, we're not going to test it. Nope, never mind, we're not going to tax it. Nope, never mind, we're going to sell it to underage people. Nope, never mind, we're going to allow it to be, you know, sold anywhere in the vicinity, next to schools or parks or anything like that. I guess maybe they'll have a, you know how they have food trucks? Maybe they'll have cannabis trucks and allow that. Why not? It's jungle rules now. Where's the responsibility that we hold for this, for our community? People are running for election in this body and don't even care about the people's safety at all. They just care about who are they buddy-buddy in this body with? Oh, who's my gang? Who's my friends? Oh, I'm not going to vote it, so don't vote for it either, because I'm not going to vote for it. Is that what's games that are being played in this body? Yeah, absolutely. I see it. I see it personally, and so does everybody else in this body. It's because I'm your friend. Well, I can tell you, there's some people in here I'm not friends with. So don't be calling me your friend when you know Doc Adwell, I'm not your friend. It's an insult. This amendment, this amendment is clearly something we can put into place to ensure that all those rules and regulations and all the hard work the board, the Cannabis Board put together to protect our people are in place. And at least put a sunset provision in this. A realistic one? Okay, maybe six months might be kind of short, but that's enough time for anybody. One day is enough time for somebody to get sick. Somebody get fatally hurt by taking a product that has not been tested. And I'm sure some of my colleagues are going to stand up and talk about certain circumstances in other jurisdictions, which I hope they do. So I ask my colleagues, even though it's been objected, to please support this amendment, at least. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the amendment, is there any objection? There's an objection? All in favor, please raise your hand. On the bill, Vice Speaker, you're recognized. Wait, Taitegui, are you concluded?
I think I have concluded my, all my amendments at this time, and that means I've spoken on this legislation. But looking forward to amendments that maybe my amendments didn't pass because who I am or because I'm notorious for calling out those who've lost the people's trust in this body, that none of my amendments get through. But I'll be sure to, you know, not turn a blind eye, like Senator Brown said earlier, I know of that comment she made with, that they don't close their eyes. We'll keep fighting for the safety and the well-being of our public. There's some of us in here who believe in that, and believe in the people of Guam deserve better. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, Vice Speaker, you're recognized.
She's just, well, I see, Madam Speaker, for giving me an opportunity to speak on this measure. Bill 260-30 COR is amended, and I want to share, as one of the longest-serving members still in this body, I remember when it was impossible to pass medicinal cannabis, let alone adult-use cannabis through this body. That's why ultimately, the medical cannabis program was approved by the voters of our island of Guam in the 2014 election, and I fully believe it took a clear stance from our people to convince a majority of the members in the 2019, 2019, to allow adults over 21 to grow, possess, and consume cannabis. But five years, Madam Speaker, five years after allowing a cannabis industry to take root, not a single cultivator or retail dispensary has opened. And while a number of bureaucratic and regulatory hurdles contributed to this delay, one that sticks out is the current requirement for laboratory testing before legal sales can occur. As it was mentioned during the hearing for Bill 260, even if a lab was approved by the government and opened tomorrow, it could take up to a year before it gets the necessary certifications to begin testing locally grown cannabis meant for patients and adult consumers. The only thing benefiting from the cannabis industry being stalled in the black market, and I heard it earlier, is the black market. I'm going to say that again. The only thing benefiting from the cannabis industry is being stalled, being stalled, is the black market, which will be better equipped and funded to undercut legal sales with each month that passes without a dispensary open. For this reason, Madam Speaker, I will be supporting Bill 260 and ask my colleagues to do the same. However, however, Madam Speaker, I hope that the prospect of cornering this local market and Guam's position to expand into other islands of Micronesia is enticing enough for a laboratory, one of which is currently going through its application process with GovGuam to open soon and render this bill the temporary solution it is meant to be, I must say that I do have an amendment. And that amendment, Madam Speaker, is in the drive. And it will read on page 3, line 7, section 3 of the bill, which is the effective date. This act shall be effective upon the enactment, and this act shall sunset five years after the date of enactment. And Madam Speaker, I want to allow that, I also want to allow to have legal make the technical corrections if there's any. And on this amendment, Madam Speaker, is, the intention behind this amendment is to commit into statute that this waiver of a laboratory testing will be temporary and not used intentionally or unintentionally to permanently remove the requirement for cannabis being sold to our residents from accurate labeling for its content and its potency. I believe, I personally believe, Madam Speaker, that a five-year... I believe, I personally believe, Madam Speaker, that a five-year sunset is reasonable timeframe for the Cannabis Control Board to iron out any issues and promongate the rules that are contributing to delays of opening our local testing lab. Madam Speaker and colleagues, this testing component is key for consumer and patient's safety, and after all, we know that some cannabis strains are more suited to help you sleep, or manage pain, or stimulate your appetite, and laboratory tests are an accurate way of indicating whether the cannabis being sold will address the therapeutic outcomes sought. At this, at the same time, Madam Speaker, it's clear that our sole laboratory applicant is still wading through the government's bureaucracy, and cultivators and dispensaries in the meantime are losing capital, momentum on this issue, and the overall advantage to the black market. And I'm hearing of it. I am humbly asking that this body approve my amendment to outline a reasonable timeframe for this temporary exemption to sunset. I know that one of the previous speaker, Madam Speaker, spoke about a timeframe that did not pass, and then this five years, and maybe coming up to a comparable timeframe. But I think, in the ultimate end, a laboratory is still mandatory, and this waiver should be temporary, and giving it the five years is that time only because of all the bureaucratic red tape that has been happening. And I literally hope that this amendment for the five years goes through, or if the dispensary, I mean, if the laboratory comes in and gets stood up right away, then, of course, this effort will be moved. But please, look at the five-year timeframe, which is temporary. Sisus Masih.
All right. So on this amendment, it's going to read now, because of the previous amendment, it will read, "This act shall be effective 90 days after enactment." And then the new language, "This act shall sunset five years after the date of enactment." So on this amendment, Senator Barnett, you're recognized.
Just a point of clarification, the amendment is, this is, this is separate from the 90-day amendment, right? Okay. This is not, this is not amending the 90-day amendment, this is, okay. All right.
It's adding to that section of the bill. Senator Barnett, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So, as I understand it, now the waiver for testing of all cannabis products will not go into effect until 90 days from the passage of the bill, and then, if this amendment passes, it'll remain in effect for five years after the date of enactment. If lab, okay, yeah. But I mean, really, I don't know, this amendment just seems to me to be legitimate, making legitimate the black market that we're so worried about, which is thriving, indeed. I mean, you go into some of these shops, you do a wink and a handshake, and they bring you behind the secret room, it's like the video store back in the day where they used to put the adult movies. So it's happening. But, and I still have yet to speak on the main motion, but this is what our peoples, when they see stuff like this, the reputation of the government of Guam is temporary forever, temporary permanent. If we're gonna make it five years, make it 50 years, why don't we just tear it up, and never mind? Because you know, to me, what this looks like is whoever is going to start the lab or not start the lab, all they have to do is sit back and do absolutely nothing. And it's a free-for-all. You think the last bill was the Wild, Wild West? And so, again, I don't support the amendment, and ask that we proceed with caution and put some type of accountability into this bill. I do have an amendment, I think, is going to go a long way towards doing that, but it seems to me that we're hell-bent on passing this bill and making it as loose as we can. I'm not sure who it's going to benefit, but ultimately, I think it's gonna harm the people of Guam. And we didn't put roadblocks in front of these industries. The government of Guam, this administration, previous legislatures legalized cannabis for responsible adult use, and then it's like everyone took their ball and went home. We haven't moved a muscle. And now we're coming in here saying, "Oh, the testing, oh, you know," never mind the testing for everything, when there's science and there's data that shows that other states that have legalized cannabis are struggling with contaminants, not just in the flowers and the buds, but in the gummies and the dabs and everything else that we have just given a free pass to. That's all, Madam Speaker. Sisus Masih.
Sisus Masih. On the amendment, Senator Parkinson, on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Earlier, when one of my colleagues had proposed the amendment for the six-month timeline, I thought that that might be too short. That being said, I think a five-year timeline in a vacuum by itself would be too long. However, it is also anchored by the other caveat, that this will sunset also when a lab opens. So it's not, with this amendment proffered by previous speakers, and the current one, the sunset provision is, you know, it's a, and so I think that there is room to compromise between the two. I would be willing to support a two-year sunset. And so at this time, I would like to make an amendment to the amendment, to reduce it from a five-year timeline to a two-year timeline to sunset, in addition to its ability to sunset upon opening of a lab.
On that amendment to the amendment, Vice Speaker Barnes, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And as I said earlier, when I was proffering this amendment, that it would only be temporary, and I wanted to make sure that there was no intentional, that there was no intentional to keep this bill, if it became long, permanent, and if, if, if six months was too, or 180 days was too little, and five years is too long, a compromise of two years, then yeah, that would be a start. But Madam Speaker, if I may, I do not want this bill to go through and know that there will be no lab testing, laboratory testing for cannabis, at all costs. There should be testing. I'm going to stress that over and over again. But as the author of medicinal cannabis, Senator Clint, on the recreational use of cannabis, five years later, we're still at nothing. So if we need to assist, as a policymaking body, to move forward, I'm okay with that, because I think there are people out there who really need this. Medicinal cannabis, for me, was a journey that I had hoped that patients suffering from debilitating health issues will really have the opportunity to utilize medicinal cannabis without any fear. But, Madam Speaker, we have both, and nothing is happening. And one of the key issues was, okay, in order for us to start the businesses and have everybody follow the rules and regs, let us temporarily waive the laboratory testing. I said to the author of this legislation, I don't have a problem with that, but I do have a problem to make it permanent, to not have laboratory testing. So I ask you, based on this compromise, from instead of five years down to two, that I will go ahead and work with that amendment, and I appreciate the good author listening to the concerns, and I will work with that. So I support the amendment to my five-year amendment.
On the amendment to the amendment, there's been an amendment to the amendment, so that it shall sunset two years after date of enactment. On that amendment to the amendment, is there anyone to speak? If not, on the amendment to the amendment, Senator Sinagstein?
Yeah, Madam Speaker. You know, it's just amazing how we come up with all kinds of amendments, right, to keep extending sunset, sunshine, whatever. At the end of the day, this, this almost sounds like the tobacco stamp. Started eight years ago, we were together when we first got elected, Speaker. And it still doesn't exist. Now we're on the cannabis, we started six years ago. So if they wanna, if my colleagues want from five to two, then I'll support it. I only asked that the Oversight Chair of the Cannabis Board, my colleague up ahead, called them out, call an oversight. I reached out to the board, and they said that, hopefully by September, they need to come up with a better excuse other than all the reasons why it's taking forever. But in reference to the amendment, I support the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. On the amendment to the amendment, it's, sorry, Senator Perez, Senator, then, Senator Perez, then please.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just a clarification on the amendment to the amendment. So I heard that the proffer of the amendment to the amendment stated that he's open to, what is it, negotiations, but he also stated that, that when the testing facility is in place, then that would pretty much is a sunset. So is the amendment to the amendment two years unless a lab opens? I just want a clarification on this amendment to the amendment.
Are you asking the sponsor of the amendment? Okay, Senator Parkinson, would you yield to the question?
Yes, I will yield to the question. The bill originally as written, it automatically sunsets when a laboratory opens. So this amendment will add an additional sunset provision, in that it will sunset either when the lab opens up, or after two years, whichever comes sooner.
Senator Perez.
Okay, that, 'cause that's very different from what this amendment states, so I just wanted to make sure. Is it possible to get that written, so that we all know what we're voting on?
Senator Perez.
Senator Perez, the provision for it to sunset after the lab opens, that's the base bill. This is just adding another provision to sunset.
Order, please. Senator Perez, you have the floor.
Yeah, I'd just, I would like to request the, a written version.
Yes, ma'am, it's in the bill.
Anything else, Senator Perez, on the amendment?
It's not written, it's by, I think it's implied, but not written. Thank you.
Thank you. On the amendment to the amendment, Senator Canata, or Senator Duane, yes, and Senator Canata's not here.
Sisus Masih, Madam Chair. I certainly support the amendment. I just wanted to make a few comments on some of the discussion on the floor. I agree with Senator Sinagstein, and I'm sure the Chair of the Committee is gonna have to really just put some pressure on and get these folks in and figure out what's going on, 'cause you know, I'm gonna reiterate once again, this is a consequence of us passing laws and having no follow-through. The bottom line is, Madam Speaker, you know, like other legislation, I don't know what it is on certain things, but our neighbors to the north seem to just be able to do things so much better than us in some things. And you know, sometimes we have to use examples. Everybody's talking on the floor here about examples, 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 examples. Well, for some reason, either it's not being reported, if there's some sort of major, you know, dilemmas and discrepancies and issues with our friends up in the CNMI, which I don't think is the case. Why can't we borrow from our neighbors sometimes on things that they do right? Another thing, Madam Chair, is, I'll tell you something right now, just like other bills that we've been passing, and we've been talking about putting notice out, this industry, you know, has been fighting for this for the longest time, the people, you know, this legislature passes bills, and it is true, it looks like a bait-and-switch sometimes, well, we won't do our job. Has there been one appropriation for a lab out of this legislature? Has there been anything that's gone forward with regard to, to, to saying, hey, you know, any efforts other than just saying, "You can't do it, you can't do it, 'cause the cannabis board's not moving"? You know, we have to take some responsibility sometimes, and then just say these amendments are gonna cure everything. This industry is gonna have to self-regulate, because the government's not moving. I mean, for those that are so upset about it, maybe repeal the law then, if that's what you wanna do. But I'm just saying that, that, you know, this is a responsible provision to be put in, because it puts on a timeline that's reasonable, that gives any accommodation going forward, time to do what it needs to do. The clock is ticking, but everybody's got a responsibility here. And to pretend if we tinker, or we do this, or we do that, it's gonna just make it a little bit better. You know, problems arise, and I'll tell you something right now, this industry knows that there'll be unborrowed time if situations start to arise where they can't police their own industry, they can't put out a proper product, and they can't do something as seemingly doable as our neighbors. So with that, Madam Speaker, I support the amendment. I hope what it does is, puts a fire under our rear end, not on the end of a pipe, and get her done. Thank you, Madam Chair.
On the amendment to the amendment, all right, Senator Fisher. I'm waiting for Senator Canata, he had raised his hand. Okay, Senator Canata, can I rec, he was, he had his hand up first. Senator Canata.
I was just gonna say, if it's a simple amendment, can we just not print paper? 'Cause we got plenty of paper on our desk, and we just keep printing paper for one or two years, five years? So if it's just one, one amendment to, from five years to two years, then can we just print, I mean, not print it, just allow it as a, what do you call it, tree-friendly measure, and just change it with that one amendment? But if we really need printed, let's change, okay?
I believe we did proceed with the change from five to two, without it being printed. Senator Lujan, on the amendment to the amendment.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, you know, I stand in full support, but I, I also have questions. You know, as the previous speaker had mentioned, this body had passed bills, and this is a consequence of passing a bill that we don't quite know how to traverse down the road. Likewise, we're putting up these years, and we're not basing it on any type of science, we're just kinda pulling it out of our dogons at this point. I'm concerned that, is this gonna be a government lab or a private lab? And if it's a private entity, is it gonna be a lucrative business? Because if it's not lucrative, they're not going, they're not, they're not gonna stay in business. I mean, as the previous speaker had mentioned, there has been no appropriation made if it's gonna be a government lab, and likewise, there's even no mention, are we, I mean, and if we're, if we're looking at a private enterprise, are we even trying to bring out an incentive, like, we'll give you a QC to, to open up a lab? Because, again, unless it's lucrative, you know, someone's gonna look at it, gonna run the numbers, and do the due diligence, and saying, you know, "How many big growers are we gonna have here? One, two? How many acres are they gonna have? Okay, well, testing," I mean, and I don't know how that's calculated in testing, and what the pricing is gonna be, but they're gonna say, "Well, okay, it's gonna, how much investment is it gonna take? How long is it gonna take me to get a return on my money? Do I have to go out and rent property, or lease property, or not?" Those, those need to be taken in consideration in regards to a startup business. Those, those need to be taken into consideration in regards to a startup business and whether or not they're going to have the capital to be able to sustain this thing. And whether or not this, this business, the lab is a lucrative business to be able to stay in business. And so that, that is my concern. I mean, it's nice all on paper, the thesis is nice, defending the, defending the thesis is nice, but in the real world, in the real world out there to start a business, especially Especially now? Are they going to be able to go out and get a loan and say, well, what is it for? I'm going to test marijuana? Hmm, maybe not all institutions are going to want to do, give them a loan for that. So, again, as much as I support it because we, we, yeah, we, we've gone down this road and we need to go down this road, but this is the road we've, we have, this body had chosen to go down and not knowing exactly which direction to go. And so we are, again, at this point, let's come back and say, is it going to be a government lab or a private lab? If it's a private lab, what are we as a government doing to entice them to, to be able to get it up faster? Can we give you a QC? What's it cost to start up a lab? This type of testing? I don't know. I don't know what the answer is. But I can tell you this for sure, if the lab opens and it's not lucrative, it's, it's going to close down. It's going to close down. And then what happens? We open up, the lab opens, it closes down because it's not a lucrative business, and then what happens? What happens to, to, to this bill that becomes the big, that law? I don't know. It closes, stops. And then that's where, hey, you know, we'll give you a QC. Well, once a business closes down, it bankrupts you or sells all its assets and things like that, it's not very easy to open up a business. So we may have to, I mean, look at ourselves too and say, what are we doing in this side of the House? Or maybe in the government agency that offers QC's to say, hey, I mean, can we help you out? What can we do for you to get it up there, to get you started? Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment to the amendment, Senator Fisher.
Thank you very much. I was, I appreciate the fact that we went from five years to two years, and I think that we're in the process of making sausage here. I'm not happy with the two years, but if that's what it's going to take, then I can go along with it. I, I would approve of the five years more than that. I think that the what we, the way we are treating this process is hostile to business on Guam. Again, I've said it before, it's a legitimate business. People are entitled to open it up. We told them they could do it, and now we're saying no, and we're having this debate on whether or not we were originally going to sunset it 180 days after, after its enactment, which was just a formula for death of the industry. And we had a very reasonable suggestion that we stretch that out to five years for the sunset. It's no reason for our hair to be on fire because, as it's been observed by many people, this process will automatically sunset once the lab opens. So I'm not concerned about that. I am concerned about whether or not a lab will open in two years. I don't believe that's going to happen. So that's why I approve of the five years, but we're making sausage, so I can go along with it. And I'd like to briefly remark on my friend Jesse's, Senator Jesse's remarks. I think that his suggestion that perhaps a qualifying certificate is appropriate to attract an individual to come in and open a lab, those people would be taking quite a risk. Guam has a discrete population of roughly 150,000 people, not all 150,000 people by any measure are consuming marijuana. Is the market big enough to support the lab? A person might look at it and say, well, I don't know. I don't, I don't know how much of the product we will be able to process and sell. Maybe I don't want to get into the market of testing because it's probably going to be a multimillion dollar setup, and I don't want to make the investment, particularly if I might lose the entire investment. So in order to attract more participants into the field, I think that, and I would be happy to work with any senator on developing or working with GITA, of course, for establishing qualifying certificates for this laboratory. I think that that would go quite a way towards making this process more effective, more business-friendly. And I just have to remark, we are looking at a lot of money that is not being captured by the Department of Revenue and Taxation. As lawmakers, that is a big concern, a great concern. We want, we want that money, and we don't like to see it slipping away. And I wouldn't, I have to differ a little bit. I wouldn't consider this necessarily a black market. I would consider it a gray market. And the reason is because it's clear, as one of the senators remarked, you know, it's, it's not that difficult, even in a retail establishment, to sometimes, you know, get a bit of marijuana. So the market is moving ahead of us. The market has moved beyond us. The market, while hundreds and hundreds of years old, has now come into the daylight, and it is moving even though we have not. So these retailers and wholesalers are just, they're voting with their feet, and they're just going to do this process whether or not we want to, you know, assist and capture revenue or not. The market exists, the industry exists. Let's be more congenial and helpful to business in general and to this young, sort of, this young business in particular. So if somebody's interested in the QC program, I'm, I'd like to, I'd like to attract, I would see if we can attract a laboratory in here and see what happens. But it's a legal industry, let's help it. Let's, let's not strangle it in its crib. Thank you, ma'am.
On the amendment to the amendment, Senator Barnett, sorry, Senator Barnett.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yeah, so we started out, it was, oh, the lab, like, so and so, it's going to be a couple months, they're going to be stood up, and then it's like, okay, let's give them, so now we're talking about two years. And basically, what I feel like we're saying is, we're telling our government, hey, you took four years to not get this done, so let's give you another two years. And then after that, we give you another two years. So, again, I just, I think we need to figure out how we can get this industry off the ground and going and, and instead of trying to waive, because, you know, these, the waiver of the testing, it comes at a risk to the very people who are going to be consuming this cannabis. So, again, I just got to say, I don't, there's been a lot of criticism about how long this has take, this has taken to stand up this lab and to fully realize the green dream of recreational, responsible adult-use cannabis. But if we continue to enable our government by, you know, moving the finish line further and further away, I don't think we're doing much to benefit the people of Guam. Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker.
Sisus Massey. On the amendment to the amendment, Senator Tait.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, earlier, my good colleague from Baragata Heights brought something that I was concerned about too. So I went to seek legal, her legal advice on this because it, it does, it's almost contradictory. First, you say that as soon as a lab is open, that then, then this goes away, you know, all cannabis must be tested. And then you go to the effective date, and now it says that it will go, it'll sunshine, well, now two years, this amendment. So after speaking with legal, I think that what needs to happen, and I don't know if I'm doing this correctly, in the process of making an amendment to scratch out this act and put, scratch it out, to put Section 8108. So, A.
Senator Tait, we're going to have to, because this one we're on right now is an amendment to an amendment, we're going to have to dispose of that first before.
Okay, and then we can bring that up later. Okay, thank you, Madam Speaker. I just wanted to make sure that is, is addressed so there's no contradiction in the, in the legislation.
So on the amendment to the amendment, is there anyone else to speak on the amendment to the amendment from the two to five, five to two? If not, then the sponsor of this amendment, Senator Park, Senator Brown, on the amendment to the amendment. Senator?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I mean, I hope a lab does set up, but, you know, we always have the potential of a lab not setting up, and then where does that put us? You know, we're sitting here complaining that, well, nothing's happened in the last five years. Well, why is that? I mean, if the whole, you know, direction was to go in this direction, why didn't it happen? I mean, wasn't this this great wave of all this money to be made and cannabis to be all over the place because it's just the coolest thing around, and it hasn't happened? And again, as I mentioned earlier this afternoon, I mean, you know, the carts in front, you know, the carts in the front and the carabows in the back at this point, that's probably why it's not moving. But I think we need to be cautious, particularly because we did not agree to narrow down what we were allowing to not be tested is very concerning because we don't know what we're going to get out there, what people are going to be given or sold because we're not testing. And so we think the solution to that, because the industry that we keep hearing and talking about that's not moving, needs to move forward in spite of that. So now we're saying, okay, five years is not good, let's do two years, and let's see what happens. You know, this is so backwards. But we're creating this reality that this is the movement and the motion that we're expecting to happen out there. If something was really intending to move as an industry, it would have moved. The governor signed this bill. Who's in charge of the government these days? The administration. So what, what's, what's been all the holdback? All this government bureaucracy my colleagues are complaining about? Why weren't they stepping up if there was something they needed to look at or facilitate or have oversights on? And yet now it's before us to just remove any testing requirements and just, you know, let it move forward because the industry must move forward, cannabis must move forward. Cannabis must move forward on the debate of this floor than any other critical issue that's facing this community. So I just think we need to bring that to light and, and really be aware of what we're doing because somehow we think that this is the way to go. But I'm cautious with that. I certainly hope nobody gets sick. I hope they're not going to consume anything that's going to harm them because there's no ability to test. You don't know what you're getting. And we have colleagues here who would jump up and down and say, yeah, let's go, let's press the, you know, let's press the accelerator down here. So I think we just need to be aware and be cautious of what's happening today with regards to this amendment and this legislation. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment to the amendment, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized? If not, Senator Parkinson, you may close on your amendment to the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. It's crazy to think, it has been five years since we've legalized and we don't have an industry open. One of the things we talked about as being the main impediment, the main impediment in the conversation today is that we don't have a lab. And, you know, we, we, some of my colleagues ask, why are we waiting the five years? Why are we having this conversation now? Well, I myself, early into this process, from year one, I said that this would be a problem, this labs. I have on record for a very long time saying these labs are a prob, this lack of labs would be a problem. And at the time, we were bright-eyed, optimistic and bushy-tailed, thinking that the labs will be there when the rules are ready. They say they're going to be ready, so don't worry about it, Will. Like, we don't need to account for that. And time went on, and time went on, and the question of the lab became sort of like someone's really late rent, you know? The check's always on the mail, it just got delivered to the post office, it's coming in any day now. And even when I got in as a senator in this legislature, for about a year and a half, I'd been hearing that the labs are coming next quarter. And so it's not so much that my positions have changed, it's thus that everybody else's positions have changed as they've seen things my way. It took five years for the constant promises to lose their luster to lead us to this point today, but this was not a sudden decision. This has been long deliberated, and it's only time that has proven me correct in my initial assertions and how we got to this point today. That being said, I'm on, I'm an eternal optimist if nothing else, and if they say they need a couple months, I supported the amendment to delay enactment for up to three months, for three months, so that way the labs have an opportunity to get ahead of this and deliver on the things that they were saying. But in case they don't, we will always advance. We will push it forward. I did not write this law that originally enacted the cannabis industry, but as a senator in this legislature, it is my job to do my duty to carry that baton forward as best as I can. Same with the Castle Doctrine bill. I did not write the original bill, but we carry the baton forward. Whether we wrote it or not, whether Democrat or Republican or not, we have a responsibility for the things we pass in the, we pushed through this legislature in the past that any unintended consequences we address. And so we are addressing them. We are addressing a problem that we saw coming for a long time, but we could not really understand until enough time had gone by. And so I support my colleagues' efforts to make this bill as good as possible. I think that, you know, we've had a number of amendments we've been able to find a compromise on, and I think whatever version of the bill comes out of this committee will be better for it. I also echo the sentiments of my colleagues on the right who say that, you know, we also need to take this one step further. It's not enough to just look good on paper, as he says. But we also need to make sure that we put our resources and our commitment there. We talk about it, it's been five years, we've never done a lab, what's going on? Well, this, we've never had an appropriation for a public lab. I, I know there was no appetite for that before, but if we want to have a public lab, I'm open to that conversation, and let's put some appropriation dollars to it. If we want to open up businesses and we want to incentivize them, I'm, I'm in support of qualifying certificates or whatever mechanisms we could use in other industries, let's use them here. Let's use all tools at our disposal to make this successful. So as we continue to carry the baton forward, the work is not done until we have our first dispensaries open up selling product. And so as we continue discussions, maybe in two years, labs don't open up, and maybe we entertain the idea of opening our own labs. Maybe they reschedule to Schedule III, the cannabis, the cannabis product, and we have a whole different conversation about how we regulate it. I don't know what the future will bring, but I know with the problem before us, we are being told that the lack of labs is a problem, and this is a solution-oriented approach to solving that. Whatever comes of it next, I gladly accept all challenges coming forward, but that's the nature of the job, right? We take all challenges, whether it be typhoon or financial collapses, or change in oil, or generators and power plants blowing up, we take it as they come, and we do our best. And so with that, I ask my colleagues to not just support this amendment to the amendment, but the overall bill and the spirit and intent of trying to find a solution to a problem that has now been going on five years in terms of implementation. So let's do this, let's work together and make teamwork to make the dream work. Thank you for that, Madam Speaker, and I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Sisus Massey, so this is on the amendment to change five years to two years. That's all we're voting on right now, is changing five years to two years in this Section III. On that amendment to the amendment, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, that amendment passes. So now we are on the amendment again that reads, this act shall be effective 90 days after enactment, this act shall sunset two years after the date of enactment. On that, is there anyone who'd like to speak? Senator Tait, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. As I mentioned earlier, actually, it wasn't the As I mentioned earlier, actually, it wasn't the, the place to indicate this, but now that we're on the, the amendment, the original amendment that has been amended, and speaking with legal, I want to ensure there's no contradiction in the, in the legislation because it, it sounds like if, after two years, it's going to sunset, what if happens if, you know, they don't have a, a lab, or they have a lab? Does this still extend it to another year? So after speaking with legal, it would be best to strike out this act and put sec, after effective date, to put section 8108A and 7 shall be affected upon enactment. But however, this is a little bit more complicated, so that we are clear. It's being written out right now from legal to pass out to my colleagues to make sure that that change is made. So if I can have one minute recess while it's being passed out, or if, if we can go ahead and do it without?
You, you have an amendment on the floor. The question is whether we're going to proceed without it in writing. Is there any objection to proceeding without it in writing? To change the words, this act in both instances to 8108 parentheses A, parentheses 7.
And also, Madam Speaker, to ensure that we're, that process is correctly done, instead of making it a whole new amendment to the legislation. Because if it is, then the, the author of this amendment can actually, she still has the floor and can proffer that amendment separately.
You're making an amendment to the, her amendment.
Madam, Madam Speaker, on a point of information, on the beginning of this amendment, I asked that, to allow legal counsel to make any technical correction. And as we look at the citation, what is being proffered or inquired by the, by the senator from Megania or Tamuning, that is the right citation section. So I would assume that legal, but I'm getting an eye from counsel saying that we need to probably take a break because we need to cite that section as it is worded in the title. So a moment's recess, please.
All right. Well, we've cited it, so the question is, is it going to be proffered?
Well, I can, I can proffer it, Madam Speaker, since I haven't spoken on the amendment that's already been amended and incorporated, but I just want to make sure the language is correct because we are striking out this act and incorporating section 818, 8108A and 7, and then the language after it reading should be conducive to that change. And I, I don't see how it can be conducive if section 810887 shall be affected upon enactment, shall sun, and then what, take away this and shall, act shall sunset two years after the date of enactment. Does that sound like a sentence that's clear? If it is, then I have no problem just making this amendment, you know, without, making an amendment to the amendment that has been amended. Gets kind of confusing. So if we can just have one minute and clarify this.
Take a one-minute recess. All right, we're back from recess. Senator Taitugui, are you proffering the amendment? Senator Taitugui, you've already read the amendment to be where it says this act, we're going to replace that with the words section 8108A7 in both instances in this paragraph.
Okay, and it's also on the.
That's confirmed with legal? That's confirmed.
Okay.
Is there any objection to doing the amendment without it being in writing?
Yeah, and it is in the Google Drive, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so if any, anybody have any questions in the Google Drive? Okay, thank you.
All right, so on that amendment, is there anyone who'd like to speak? All right, if there's no one who'd like to speak, is there any objection, or Senator Taitugui, you may close on the amendment?
I waive closing. It's a very technical, yeah.
So is there any objection to this amendment to the amendment? If not, amendment passes, and we're back on the main amendment by Vice Speaker. Yes, Senator Taitugui, you're finished? Okay, Senator Fisher on the main amendment.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Speaker. I'd move to recess until nine o'clock tomorrow morning.
It's a motion to recess, there's been an objection. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion fails. We'll continue, we're on this amendment by the Vice Speaker. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this amendment? If not, Vice Speaker, you may close on your amendment. As amended.
As amended, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, if this amendment doesn't pass, then the lab waiver can literally last forever. As long as a lab doesn't open, it's key to spell out a sunset provision to force lab testing to be conducted. And I think that's what we all want. And as the good author of this mention mentioned, if two years seems too long for some, then anyone can work to get a lab open quicker than it is. But yes, it has been five years. The intention of this amendment is to put it on the record that this waiver will only be temporary. And if senators need to take up this issue in another term in the future, then good, they can weigh what is best at that time. But inaction, Madam Speaker, only helps the black market, and I humbly urge this body to make it clear that this waiver is a short-term solution, not a change in our mandate to test cannabis in a certified laboratory. And Madam Speaker, just to be clear, the, and to address a comment of a previous speaker on this amendment who asked, where in the bill is it indicated that the testing waiver would sunset when the laboratory opens? I will refer to section seven, number seven, starting on line 11, delivering, distributing, or selling cannabis to consumers or other cannabis businesses if and only if there is no cannabis testing facility on Guam. To me, that plainly means that the selling of cannabis can only occur without a lab testing if and only if there is no lab open and certified. So I hope that this clarifies the concern that was raised earlier, and I just hope that we support this compromise measure and, and make sure that we realize that this component is only temporary and whichever comes, which, we hope that the laboratory will be up and stood up before the two-year mark. So thank you, Madam Speaker, and I hope my colleagues support this amendment.
Sisus Masi, I'm going to read the amendment before we vote. Section three, effective date, section 8108A7 shall be effective upon 90 days after enactment. Section 8108A7 shall sunset two years after the date of enactment. On that amendment, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, that amendment passes as amended. Vice Speaker, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak on this amendment, more importantly, on the measure of the bill. And I really hope that our colleagues support the effort. And again, just to stress to the listening audience, that my intention for the support of this effort, that this lab waiver is only temporary because we want to make sure that the safety of the products that are being consumed out there is safe for our community to utilize if they so choose. So thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity. Sisus Masi.
We're discarding this. Vice Speaker, we'll discard this. No, there's a second one. Page two, three, lines 26 to six. Okay, not offered. All right, on the bill, Senator Barnett on the bill. You're recognized.
Sisus Masi, Madam Speaker. And thank you for the opportunity to comment on, on the bill. I just hear people when they talk out there about the 37th Guam Legislature and our desire sometimes to waive or otherwise lower standards that, that we have set out. And you know what I'm talking about? Oh, the school might not pass inspection, busta, let's waive it. Oh, you have a hard time with math, busta, let's waive it. Oh, the government failed on the testing of the weed, busta, let's waive it. So I, I kind of was thinking about last night, because I spoke with a bunch of friends who are waiting, right? I mean, was it five years, seven years? And I was asking them, like, what is, what does this testing component mean to you? And if we were to just, if we had to test today, to test all the cannabis that's being grown, and the law was stood up and ready to go, how many of these growers on this island do you think would be able to pass the testing requirements which are laid out in, in law and which I'm going to go over? And remark I got from a friend of mine was, maybe about half. Because the, the thinking is with a lot of the cultivators, it's the ones who really know what they're doing, who really know what they're doing. And so when we talk about waiving the testing requirement for not just the flowers, the buds, but also the gummies, the dabs, the vapes, and all the other 20 million things they make out of cannabis nowadays, what exactly are we doing? And what does the laboratory that's supposed to test 10 grams per lot from each of these, and I'm assuming a lot is a harvest, and so the process would be in a perfect island. Public health would take 10 grams of cannabis from, per lot, from these cultivators, and then they would, they would run tests on this cannabis. And then, you know, one of the, the testing determines the potency, that's one aspect of it. And so if you ever look at any of these cannabis products that they're in the legal states, you'll see that the labeling indicates the percentage of THC, but it's not just the potency that is tested. We also test for contaminants to include the presence of heavy metals like arsenic, lead, cadmium, mercury. We test also for pesticides. We test thresholds for pesticides authorized by Article four of the chapter. We also test for solvents, because again, once you start getting away from just the flowers and the buds, and you get into the processing of, of the cannabis for, you know, to, to be made into just whatever the variety of different byproducts is, you start adding things like solvents and whatnot. And so we would be testing for that. We'd also be testing for any visible foreign or extraneous material that is not intended to be part of the product being produced. We also test for microbiological impurities, including but not limited to mold, yeast, solvent-based extracts, as well as bacteria. And we also test for coliform, which I thought was kind of funny. And so what does, does waiving this testing, what does this expose our, our people to, I wondered? And I didn't have to go very far, it was just, it was the first page, Google, LA Times, and they talk about the dirty, dangerous secret of California's legal weed. Of course, California was one of the, if not the first, when you think about legal cannabis, I know you either think Denver or California. So in California, they did a recent study, and it was 25 of 42 legal cannabis products at the LA Times purchased from retail stores had tested at private labs showing concentrations of pesticides either above levels the state allows or at levels that exceed federal standards for tobacco. The contaminants include chemicals tied to cancer, liver failure, thyroid disease, genetic neurologic harm to users, et cetera, et cetera. So with the lab testing in, in California, they weren't even able to mitigate the release of contaminated cannabis products onto the market. So when we talk about waiving the testing requirement for the cannabis, that is what we are talking about. We are talking about allowing any and all cannabis, flowers, buds, and products which are processed and made by the cultivators to be released onto the market for, well, 90 days after the passage of this bill, and then for another two years or until the lab gets stood up. And so when we talk about the bill and what it does, I think that it behooves us to look at exactly what it does, or in this case, what it doesn't do. And what the bill doesn't do is have that level of accountability, again, when we envisioned adult-use responsible cannabis. You know, we didn't envision an island where, you know, people are smoking pesticides or in, you know, ingesting high levels of arsenic, cadmium, or lead, right? We wanted to stand up this industry free and clear, and unfortunately, that didn't happen. And I get it, we're here now, and a lot of people think that this lab is the last block that now it looks like we're going to allow people to jump over so that they can get into the legal cannabis market. And so we talk about not testing the cannabis, that's what we're talking about. We're talking about not looking for contaminants, we're talking about basically putting this waiver out there and, and saying, hey, you know, buyer beware, you can smoke this, you can eat this. And I too have heard, one of the previous speakers had talked about people getting sick from locally-produced edibles. Right, and I heard about that too. And, and you know, in, in this case, I heard there was a bunch of people got diarrhea, right? And that seems to me like a good case, right? We don't, if you think about the other side of the spectrum and the possibility of, you know, people getting more sick, that's the kind of water that we're swimming out into. But again, I, I understand it, and I think that what we have struggled to do with this bill and in this session is to add just a little bit of accountability to this measure. And I actually have an amendment that I'm hoping I can get the support of my colleagues on. And it, it actually was, came from some of the conversations I was having last night. You know, different people said different things. One of them said, it's totally dangerous, right? You're going to open the market, people who are not regular cannabis consumers, and there are, I've got uncles who. are, I've got uncles who used to drive trucks for a living, and they retired, and, you know, these are uncles that used to buy the 12-pack of bud on the way home from the store, and I ran into them at a party, I said, hey, you still drinking your beer? Oh, no, boy, I'm smoking whatever the weed now has all kinds of crazy names, right? So, one of my friends had said that it's dangerous, because you're getting people who are venturing out and they want to try legal cannabis, and now they're trying a product that we don't even know if it's safe. And so, my amendment aims to provide just a little bit of accountability. I don't agree with the non-testing of any of the cannabis byproducts. I think that, and I think what's happened in the state of California and across the board with the legalization of cannabis, it's not on the personal side where you can grow whatever number of plants at your house, right? Once money enters the equation, it becomes a matter of who can produce the most cannabis at the cheapest cost, right? And a lot of times, these people are cutting corners and they're using, you know, fertilizers that aren't necessarily safe for human consumption, they're using pesticides in order to bring that bigger yield for the crop. And so, if we're going to give the cultivators of cannabis the ability to ply their wares without them being tested for safety, then I think this amendment, which I've passed out, and it amends line 7, page 3, to add a new section, 8108a72, to the bill to read. Subsection 8108, lawful operation of cannabis-related facilities. Two, notwithstanding any other provision of law or regulation, in the absence of a licensed cannabis testing facility on Guam, cannabis cultivators may deliver, distribute, or sell cannabis flowers or buds, provided the cannabis cultivator attests under penalty of perjury their cannabis flowers or buds meet the requirements relating to contaminants contained in 3GAR subsection 9802F2. And that was the section that I kind of went through in the beginning of my remarks here. And so, yes, when talking to just some of the people who are potential stakeholders in the legal cannabis industry, I got different answers. Again, one said, it's too dangerous, don't do it. Someone else said, why doesn't public health go to these grow ops and check it out? You know what I mean? Then someone else said, why don't you just make public health do the testing in the meantime? And someone further said, why don't you make the growers test it themselves? And so, my next question was, well, can they do that on Guam? And some of these cultivators seem to think that there are labs on Guam that they could take their cannabis to that aren't necessarily cannabis testing facilities or laboratories, even though that's what the law mandates, that they can take them to these facilities and they can have them run through and tested for, you know, all the contaminants that are listed in the law. And so, that's kind of the gist of my amendment. It's not necessarily requiring these growers to perform the tests on the cannabis that would normally be required if we had a lab testing facility. But it is asking them to attest under penalty of perjury that their cannabis is free of, or meets the requirements that are laid out relating to the contaminants. And so, I really feel like this, it puts the onus on the cultivators in the meantime, while we sort through this lab requirement, which depending on who you ask, we could be looking at two months, two years, five years, who knows? But just to have that little bit of accountability for the cultivators to just say, yeah, hey, I solemnly swear that, you know, there isn't, you know, 50 gallons of roundup in these buds, or whatever. I think that that really, it accomplishes the goal of allowing us to stand up the industry in a way that, you know, we want to see. Because remember, this money is going to be going to the schools, it's going to be going to public safety, right? So, I get it, we do want to stand up the industry. But we want to stand it up, again, to use that word responsibly, because this is about responsible cannabis adult use. And I think that this amendment, although I do have a lot of just struggles and issues about waiving the testing completely, I just, when I put my finger in the air and I look at what I can get through or what I can't, I'm hoping that my colleagues will support this amendment. Because like I said, I think it's a good compromise of allowing the industry to move forward, but also getting the word from these cultivators that the cannabis that they're putting out there is safe. And if it isn't, and we find out later, then I believe they could be held liable for that. So, again, I ask my colleagues to support the amendment. I think it's a reasonable amendment, and I believe that it makes the bill that much better. So, Sisus Masi, Madam Speaker.
Sisus Masi. On that amendment, Vice Speaker, you're recognized on the amendment.
Sisus Masi, Madam Speaker. I know this is a long day. As I was listening to the retiring speaker and the author of this amendment, I will stand and rise in support of this effort, as he also noted that this is one way to declare under penalty of perjury that their cannabis flowers or bud meets the requirement relating to the contaminants contained in the 3GAR section 9802F2. Literally, for me, that gives me some relief to know that the growers and the suppliers that will be going through this and packaging this stuff, that they declare under penalty of perjury that what they're doing is free and clear of any contaminants based on what is in the provision to date. And that if they, if it's literally not happening, and there's violations, then under the rules of penalty of perjury, that Guam has in the Guam Code annotated violators can be prosecuted, and there are consequences to those that violate this clause. So, I support this effort, Madam Speaker, and appreciate the compromise to at least moving this industry forward in the proper way and making sure that eventually Guam will have a laboratory to test cannabis. But in the meantime, this is a way to support that. Sisus Masi, Madam Speaker.
Sisus Masi. On the amendment, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the Barnett amendment? Senator Brown, you're recognized.
You know, Madam Speaker, I certainly appreciate the position of our colleague of introducing this amendment. But I have to tell you, if the penalty of perjury was anything that really weighed something and meant something here, there'd be a lot of people that come and testify even before this legislature that should be prosecuted under the penalty of perjury. I mean, it's almost a regular thing here. But I think if we're looking at this in terms of the actual growers knowing what's going in, I hope they do. I hope they know the chemicals that they're, or whatever fertilizer, whatever they may be using to grow cannabis. But I don't know that they're as well-versed, or do they know what's going in, or can they guarantee what they're producing? I think that's where the concern is. If everyone that's growing is going to become their own individual tester or evaluator of what they're growing, I mean, is that really going to work? I mean, it maybe provides some protection to be a little more conscientious, but I just don't think that's going to be, I'm not going to object to the amendment being put forth, but I think, guys, what are we doing here? Making peanut butter and jelly sandwiches? This is all backwards to begin with, and here we are, trying to throw things in to try to make it make sense so that there's some protections put in there, which ultimately at the end during this time, there really are no protections that are going to be put in place, because there's no formal testing, unless all of a sudden, we're all experts in how to test for what's going into cannabis. So, yeah, they can sign and say, yeah, you know, it's all good. But is it really? No. Do we know? No, because we can't test it. It goes back to square one of where the problem is and why the industry itself has not been able to move forward in getting a testing lab put in place. So, you know, I'm not going to object to it, but again, I think it's just another sign of what's wrong and what's backwards with regards to what this legislation is putting forth to try to sidestep the whole issue or need to have testing. Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. Senator, on the Barnett amendment, is there anyone else who'd like to speak? If not, then the sponsor may close on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I actually agree with the retiring speaker, but when I get into the weeds of, you know, when I was looking at this amendment, I honestly just wasn't sure, like, what we could require and what's available outside of the, you know, the anecdotal things that I've learned over the past few days. I mean, I don't know if there is a lab where you can send, you know, your eggplant or the Department of Agriculture, I'm just not sure. But I wouldn't be opposed to anybody who wants to amend it further. But yeah, I think that, and that was kind of a funny remark about the penalty of perjury. But, you know, I think this coupled with, and I was just looking at the existing guard that this amends, and inspectors from public health do maintain the authority at any time to inspect these facilities. So, yes, cultivators could sign a piece of paper and say, I promise, and have their fingers crossed behind their back, but I'm hoping that the regulatory authority of the Department of Public Health and Social Services will kind of close that gap. And again, I don't, I'm not comfortable moving forward waiving the testing requirement completely. I understand the challenges, but I think really what I want to support is waiving the testing for the flowers and the buds temporarily. But that, again, would only be if we stand up the lab and, you know, as soon as possible. So, I'm not sure how do we do that. But again, I just ask the support of my colleagues for this amendment, which I think adds a little bit more accountability to this bill, and it's needed. Sisus Masi.
Sisus Masi. On the amendment, is there any objection? Seeing no objection to this amendment, amendment passes. All right. On the bill, Senator Barnett, you're still recognized on the bill. On the bill, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the bill? If not, then Vice Speaker, I'd like to speak.
Thank you.
Sisus Masi. Just wanted to rise on this bill and speak on it. I think some of the amendments that we've made are improvements, hopefully. The bill, of course, is a big change, a big change in policy, where currently we require that cannabis be tested. That was the deal made with the people of Guam. That was the bill passed by previous legislatures, because that was the compromise they made back then in order to legalize it. They wanted it to be regulated, they wanted employers to be able to control that in their workplaces, and they wanted it to be tested. They wanted retail products to be tested by a certified laboratory. We're acting in retrospect now, but those were very much important provisions of the bill back then, and I don't think it's clear that the bill would have passed without those promises made to the people of Guam. One of my colleagues used the word scheme, and yes, that entire scheme was laid out back then. This is not anyone in here raising new blocks for this industry, baiting and switching this industry, making the bureaucratic red tape for this industry. That was, that was the law that was passed, that it would be regulated, that employers could control drug use of their employees, and that's what we debated yesterday, was to remove that provision, that labs would test all products. And this bill wouldn't remove that provision. And with some of the amendments, it makes it temporary, hopefully. But the bill still says all products. We're granting an exemption to the lab testing for all products, all cannabis products, not only for flowers and buds. And one of, we heard testimony, or we heard others say earlier that there is a lab ready to proceed. So, we're acting right in the face of a lab finally standing itself up and ready to proceed on this, and now we're granting an exception to these companies from having their products tested. I don't know if that affects their business plans also, but I understand that one has a license with the Department of Revenue and Taxation. Construction is expected to begin. They look forward to opening toward the end of the year. At this time, however, there is no licensed growing facility, which pending a licensed operator will take a minimum of three to four months at best, assuming it is built and is a turnkey operation to harvest any cannabis. I wanted to ask the sponsor if he would yield, if he knows if there is any licensed cannabis retailer at this time.
Senator Parkinson, would you yield?
It is my understanding that there are licenses for responsible officials, but there are not any open operating licenses currently waiting a lab or anything.
For retailer?
Correct, ma'am, yes.
Okay, no licensed cannabis retailer as well. I understand there are at least one, there is at least one company registered and in the process of getting their patient-focused certification. But so, these issues that underlie this industry are really not resolved in this bill. It doesn't solve the problems that maybe these industries are, the industries having in any of these areas, the growing facility, the retailers getting their licenses as well. The risk, of course, of the bill is that without testing the products, there is potential harm to the consumers. And I think the previous amendment pointed out, and this is the guidelines very clearly, that we are testing for very particular products or effects in these cannabis products because they cause harm. That's the bottom line. Not because somebody's trying to put red type tape, but because they cause harm. And we have seen this happen in other jurisdictions as well, and that's what we're trying to prevent. And Saipan has been lucky. So, yes, they do not require labs, they've also testified, they've not seen any issues. However, I don't, we, I guess when the bill was passed and the studies were done, there's nothing to say that no issues will be present on Guam. There's prevalent use of pesticides and other products here. And so, I think erring on the side of caution for the consumers is always going to be the So, I would like to propose a couple amendments, which I also think will make the bill safer for the consumers and to ensure that they remain safe. So, instead of a blanket exemption from all products being tested while we are waiting for a lab, that we continue to, that we allow the flowers and the buds, as in the previous amendment, that those can proceed with self-assessment, as in that amendment. And so, I would like to amend the subsection 7, so that it's specific to flowers and buds, that those will be allowed without a lab. I'm also going to be proposing an amendment that says that this exemption in this bill, the whole bill, does not apply to the following. this bill, the whole bill, does not apply to the following: cannabis concentrates, cannabis-infused products, ingestible cannabis-infused products, non-ingestible cannabis-infused products, topical cannabis-infused products, and transdermal cannabis-infused products.
Speaker, I, Speaker?
Yes.
I do apologize. I see, I have three amendments in front of me.
Yes, there are three. I'm just generally discussing them. I'm going to go in specifics.
Oh, so you haven't stated, because you did say subsection seven, and I'm looking and I don't see it. So, and then you referenced...
I have three amendments, yes. I'll talk about the details. So the first one is line 11, page two. That says subsection seven, and it's line 11. It's where the bill currently says that it makes, it's making a, the bill makes a list of what will be legal without a lab. And we say in subsection seven, delivering, distributing, or selling cannabis. I want to add the words flowers or buds after cannabis. So it would be legal to delivering, distributing, or selling cannabis flowers or buds. That would be the first amendment, Madam Speaker.
After the word cannabis to add flowers or buds.
Correct.
On that amendment, did you want to speak on that? Or on that amendment, does anyone wish to speak on that amendment? If so, are there any objections? Okay. All those, would you like to? Senator Will, would you like to speak?
[inaudible]
I do apologize. There was no one who wished to spoke. I didn't ask the Speaker if she wanted to close on this one. There has been objection, all those in support of the amendment as proffered by the Speaker on page two, line 11, section seven, after the word cannabis, to include flowers or buds. There has been objection, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. One, two, three, four, five, six. Motion fails. Speaker Trelawney, you still have the floor.
Thank you. That's very disappointing because the result of not passing these amendments or any of the previous amendments that failed was that we are putting the people of Guam at risk. We are blatantly going against science when they said we should test for these things and previous legislatures when they said we should test for these things to keep the people of Guam safe. Not passing this amendment means every product can be put out on the market, any product, any cannabis-containing product, notwithstanding the levels, notwithstanding the additives, notwithstanding the harmful processing. All of those can be put out on the market because we don't have a lab and because this bill passed. We have consensus from the sponsor of the bill that flowers and buds being not tested is a lot safer than everything else not being tested. Actually, that's, there's still risk, but we've got some protections for flowers and buds in the previous amendment. But we have no protections for any other product, where a lot of the problems that is coming in other jurisdictions are from those other products. This is the harm. So I implore my colleagues. We're trying to protect their safety. Without a lab, there's a lab waiting to start. It's got a license already. It went through that business process. It was not impeded. It is ready to go. Why don't we allow it to come to fruition and to thrive? We can only do that by creating a demand for that lab and by creating an exception. We will leave any demand for that lab to succeed. And that's how we're going to kill this industry. So while we're on the brink of having a lab operate, let's not cause harm to the people in the short amount of time that it might take this lab to operate. Let's let it start. And in the meantime, there's an exception for flowers and buds. Let's not make an exception for all other products. So I'm going to propose my second amendment, line 15, page two. This, this, this is to a portion of the bill that says we're going to label flowers. I kind of found that a little funny because we're going to label the flowers, where we're not going to label any of the other products. So this one is to, it's supposed to be underlined, flowers or buds. So I'm striking the flowers only. I'm adding flowers or buds are. That would require that flowers and buds are labeled.
On the amendment, anyone wishing to speak on the amendment? Senator Siniklas, I will allow you to speak on the amendment. Please proceed.
Ma'am, a point of information. The, when you mentioned buds or flowers, are you just buds and flowers? That's what, what we're allowing them to sell? Or is that what we're, we're, how about the derivatives, like oils and tinctures and stuff?
I'm going to take that as an inquiry and ask the good speaker.
Yes, ma'am.
From Jonah, would you like to yield to that question, Madam Speaker?
Yes. On this line, currently, this line is only requiring that flowers be marked with the label indicating the David's Harvest, address of the cultivation company, a disclaimer stating that marijuana contained within this package has not been tested for contaminants. Marijuana use can be addictive and can impair an individual's ability to drive a motor vehicle or operate heavy machinery. Marijuana smoke contains carcinogens and can lead to an increased risk of cancer. And other things keep out of reach of children. That label, according to this bill, is required to be put on cannabis flowers. I would like it to be put on all products, actually. But for, I was going for flowers and buds, hoping that the flowers and buds earlier amendment had passed. But that's, that's the reasoning. I'd like all products to be labeled this way, in the absence of a lab that certifies those things.
Thank you, Speaker. Senator Siniklas, does that suffice?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank. Anyone else wishing to speak on Speaker Trelawney's amendment? If not, Speaker Therese, would you like to close on this amendment? I'm asking you to close, ma'am.
I'll wait, well, on closing just again. So the bill right now exempts all products from the lab testing. It only requires flowers to be labeled with those warnings. And so my amendment, this one amendment would require flowers or buds to be labeled with those warnings. Thank you.
Sido Smasi. On the Speaker Therese amendment to, on page two, line 15, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing no objections, motion carries. Speaker Therese, I do know there's another amendment. You may proceed.
Thank you. All right. So this amendment is to lines 26 and six on pages two and three. All right. So where we have a subsection I, I'm taking that language and moving it to subsection II, for the most part. And that's upon, that would be the same language, but just move to II, which would say upon licensure and opening of the facility, all cannabis must be tested, and the control board shall notify every licensee. So that part remains the same. I just rearranged it. I moved it down to II. Of course, there was a previous amendment by Senator Barnett that was numbered II. So I would ask you to please just mark that to be II. If this passes, it should be renumbered.
So then you could allow legal to make the technical corrections?
Yeah. And upon I, after I deleted what was there before, I want to add these words. This is the new language. This exemption, meaning the whole bill exemption, shall not apply to the following: cannabis concentrates, cannabis-infused products, ingestible cannabis-infused products, non-ingestible cannabis-infused products, topical cannabis-infused products, and transdermal cannabis-infused products. Those would be governed as they are governed today if this amendment passes, and there would be no exemption for them.
Thank you, Speaker Trelawney. On Speaker Therese Trelawney's amendment, are there anyone wishing to speak? Senator Barnett, Senator Siniklas, and Senator Tadequie, did you raise your hand, Senator? Or you're just, okay. So Senator Barnett, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam. Totally support this amendment. Really waiving the testing for the concentrates and the cannabis-infused products, ingestible cannabis-infused products, the non, all of those things that aren't coming directly off the tree in terms of the flowers and the buds. It's because there's a whole other process to make these cannabis byproducts. And these processes oftentimes involve propylene glycol. And I think the point is, we won't know what it involves. And trusting it to blind faith, I think flowers and buds is reasonable. But waiving the testing, especially for these types of products like the concentrates and the edibles, which, I mean, I just spoke earlier about the contamination they're discovering in California. And then the potential of your auntie taking a, an edible or a concentrate that was not tested, I mean, the potential for a misdosage is very, very possible if we're not going to put a pause on allowing the cannabis byproducts, for lack of a better term, to hit the market. Again, you know, the flowers and the buds, that's reasonable to waive the testing. And I think that with my amendment requiring the self-attestation and then the public health's authorities' ability to kind of oversee the whole process, I think we're okay. But again, I'm just going to say it's reckless, and it does expose the potential cannabis customer to more risk than I'm really comfortable with. And you could talk to anybody who's a potential stakeholder in this industry. It's one thing to grow your, your plants, to cut them, hang them upside down, and dry them, so you can smoke them or whatever. It's a whole other thing to use the solvents and to use a lot of the manufacturing additives that are involved in producing these edibles and concentrates and that kind of stuff. And again, I just would advise caution, especially because of the harm that we could cause people, really by allowing these products to be sold without the warnings and without the required testing, ma'am. And since we're on the subject of temporary, right, I think we are all of the understanding that this bill and this waiver for the testing is temporary. Well, so then will the unavailability of some of these cannabis byproducts, you know? It'll just be temporary. As soon as we get the lab stood up and they're able to test, then yeah, the producers. And honestly, a lot of times, it's the same people. The people who are growing their harvest, take the byproducts, the things left over after they trim the flowers and the buds, and then they use those to make a lot of times the concentrates and the gummies. So I don't think that we're going to be cutting any one section out of the market. I think we're talking about the same people. It's almost similar to the, what do they call it, snout to tail on the pig, you know? You get these guys who grow the cannabis and they use every part of the plant. They give the roots to Nana to make her tea. You know, they use the leaves and whatever buds are, maybe aren't pretty enough to sell, and they take those and they make them into the concentrates and into the edibles. So I don't think we're going to be limiting anyone's ability to participate in the green economy. I think that what we are going to do with this amendment is ensure that there's a little more safety. Because like I said, to me, it's a big difference between, you know, flowers on the tree versus edibles and gummies that, you know, the list of ingredients and the way they're able to produce these things, I think, requires regulation and oversight. And so again, I ask my colleagues to support this amendment. I think it's a good amendment that makes this bill. We've slowly been chipping away and adding more levels of accountability, really in the name of safety, you know? We had said yesterday, the debate about the legalization of cannabis is over. We're here. We're in, we're in it. And now it's on us to do what we can to, of course, stand up the industry in a meaningful way, but also make sure that our people are not harmed by that. And so I think it's a prudent amendment that I fully support, and I encourage my colleagues to do the same. Madam Sido Smasi.
Bueno, vecho, Senator Barnett. Senator Siniklas, I will acknowledge you on the amendment as proffered by the Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have to object to this amendment. I think I was about 12 years old when I got my medical understanding. I think I got my MD when I was in middle school. Joking. I used to rush home after school to try to watch Dr. Dean Adell. And back then, Dr. Dean Adell would always speak about the benefits of cannabis. And it's about 1986, '87, when, when, you know, cannabis was still illegal and the notion of ever, it ever becoming legal was never addressed. But Dr. Dean Adell was really at the forefront of, of the medical cannabis and, and the legalization. And I really respected Dr. Dean Adell because he was, you know, not only did he explain medical problems in, in, in easy and simple language, but he seemed to be a, just a wonderful swell guy, and I really respected Dr. Dean Adell. But even after that, after understanding, I still, you know, I was trained as a customs officer and, and, you know, made to believe that, you know, cannabis is bad and it's the, it's the devil. Early in my term, in our term, I went up to Saipan and, you know, I, you know, some of the government officials were, you know, were happy that I, happy that we came up there. We went up there to see the fireworks bill, I mean, the fireworks and how they work through their, their issues up there. And I happened to go into, they invited me to come over and see the cannabis operation that they had. And I walked in there and it was, it was a really great operation, you know? And I was kind of amazed that they recognized me. Hey, Mr. Goodman, you're, you know, I didn't know I had a far-reaching effect up in Saipan. But they welcomed me in, and I saw their operations. And it's, you know, I, I thought it was, it was, it was great. It was great. And it was a clean operation. They showed me from seed to, to harvest, and then from their, and then their gummies that they had on the floor, and all their edibles and their topicals and their oils. Reason why I'm, I'm, you know, I'm so adamantly against too much stringent at the get-go is because I feel that sometimes, you know, our fears are a little bit irrational. You got somebody like Dr. Dean Adell, you know? He's a medical doctor for decades and decades, and he's just a wonderful gentleman, a very, very reliable, well-meaning individual. Comes up and he says all these wonderful things about cannabis and its effects and, and how it helps people. You know, I think sometimes we might behave a little bit irrational when we're talking about cannabis. And... talking about cannabis. And... And it's funny, because, you know, like the retiring speaker said, that, you know, Saipan is lucky. No, they're not lucky. They're just doing things right. And they're doing things right without, without testing. And I think we may be a little bit irrational. And it's not that Saipan is lucky, it's because they're doing things right. And yes, we can learn from other jurisdictions, and yes, we can learn from Saipan. And I use cannabis for my medical ailments. And I'm able to stand in front of you and talk to you rationally and not inebriated. And, you know, I think everything that I'm saying is very respectful and well-meaning, and I don't have any, you know, ill intent. What I do want to do is, I want to be able to get this measure through as openly and as cleanly as possible. When you start a business, you know, you take on liability. Most businesses will have liability insurance. And not only that, people will walk to your establishment. They vote for you with their feet. And if you're not producing the kind of products that is good for them, they'll go somewhere else. We don't test for chemicals in other, in other products like corn. You know, there's a wonderful gentleman selling corn. And my wife frequently stops by there, and she buys the corn. But we don't test for contaminants in corn. Why are we testing for contaminants? For, I think, I think we're going a little bit overboard here. And, you know, it's sad to be painted that if you don't agree with them, or you don't agree with, you're the bad guy. You know, you don't, you don't, you're not, you're not well-intentioned. You don't care for the people. You know, there's so many ways that we can do stuff and get some stuff accomplished. And being too irrational sometimes, and not being able to want to work together to produce the products. I worked as a customs officer. Customs, you're supposed to facilitate commerce. You're supposed to aid commerce along, not stop commerce. There was a, there was a person who came in with a, with a piece of wood, and it wasn't lacquered, and it wasn't preserved. I could have just seized their product, but I didn't. I wanted to help facilitate commerce. So what I did was I told them to go down to Kmart, buy some lacquer, and spray it onto their, their wood carving, and it made it so that it would be able to pass. That's what we should be doing, is trying to find ways to make things happen, you know? And I, I want, I wish that, you know, we, we squelch our, this cannabis-hating notion, and everything is bad, and we're trying to do this. I think Saipan got something. I think they got something, and they're doing it right. And if given the chance, I think our people in Guam are just as smart, and, and we could just be as, just as lucky as them, as how the retiring speaker mentioned. So I can't stand in favor of this amendment. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator Tidaway, then Senator Perez. Senator Tidaway on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I looked at the, some of the items that were placed on this amendment, and I've noticed that topical cannabis infusion products are basically hemp. And hemp is, is safe, and has been brought into Guam, tested. I mean, it's even, I think if I'm not mistaken, they're brought in based on the Farmers Bill Act. So it does have some, you know, precautions and with regards to topical hemp, well, hemp products. So I don't know if we want to, you know, incorporate that because of the products that are being brought in. But they're already tested in the first place. Products that are brought into Guam, to sell in Guam with hemp products, the topical cannabis-infused products are already tested before they come here. The thing is, that they can also be made on Guam. So there, there's some areas here that, you know, if it's made on Guam, then yeah, that's an issue. I thank the speaker for trying to incorporate some type of, you know, responsibility when it comes to products, instead of, you know, just shooting at the hip and calling it, you know, what was it, lack of judgment? I don't think so. And when you talk about Saipan, it's ironic, because in Saipan, they're not making any money actually in Saipan. In fact, some of their, their products that are sitting on the shelf are, you know, molding. And that's a big issue that's happening in Saipan. It's a price war there, because the produce is everywhere, everywhere. You know, when the, when someone talks about, you know, oh, well, we don't test certain products here, like what's selling on the side of the road, or corn. Well, I'm sorry, but corn does not give you hallucinations, or slow down your ability to mobilize, or has a warning sign on the side of corn saying maybe hazardous to your health. That's a big difference. It's about being responsible, not just sitting here and thinking that, what is it, claiming that we're being irrational? That's ridiculous. We're talking about the safety and well-being of the people on Guam. That's not irrational. That's responsible. And whether we like to believe this or not, but these products get into children's hands, We try every possibility to ensure that our public is safe. We put in rules and regulations, not to later on call them irrational. We're being responsible. And I stand in support of this, of this amendment. And though I was concerned about the topical cannabis infusion, like the hemp products, those are already tested that are brought into Guam. But like I said, they can be made here on this island. We had situations where certain things like peanut butter, Roman lettuce, even Tylenol that was recalled. How many times have we heard of products being recalled because of the lack of testing? Products have been recalled. Will we be able to recall a product that comes in that makes a person sick? There's nothing in here governing anything when it comes to recalling. So, you know, it's not irrational, it's responsible legislation. And this body has been lacking that. It makes you wonder, too. I mean, we haven't even asked the question, is there anybody in this body whose family member, close family member is, holds a business license for cannabis, or even sells cannabis? Because if there is somebody in here, they should be exempt Somebody should say something, because it's obvious. It doesn't matter about the safety of our people. It matters about their pocketbook, how much money they can make on the backs of the people, on the backs of people getting hurt. So I stand in support of this. And anybody who objects to something like this is irresponsible. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Senator Sabina, you're recognized.
Sizosmosi, Madam Speaker. It's a difficult act to follow, but I just wanted to add a couple of things. And I do recall the whole discussion on the bill before it passed, and the regulations. I think one of the big issues was safety. And now we're reneging on that promise. And I think what this, I rise in full support of this amendment, because, you know, the problem with synthetic products is that the concentration can be increased to an extent where, you know, it's harmful. And according to the CDC Morbidity and Mortality Weekly Report, they analyzed 540,000 cases nationwide, where people under the 25 years old wound up in hospitals due to complications from cannabis use. And this is a recent, a recent study. Sorry. Hold on. Yeah, and so the, in the study, it says, "From 2019 to 2022, researchers found that cannabis-related emergency department visits increased overall among kids, teens, and young adults. Nearly 1 in 5 Americans over 12 years old used cannabis in 2021," according to the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Administration. "And studies show that marijuana users across the board are more likely to visit emergency departments or to be hospitalized. And for teens or young adults with mood disorders, marijuana use puts them at an increased risk of self-harm, suicide attempts, and death." And so Guam has done their own studies amongst public school students, and we have a high prevalence of marijuana use, albeit that it's illegal. It's illegal for youth to use this product. Nearly half, about 45% of all high school students had tried marijuana. 1 in 4 had used marijuana within the, before the study. And also among middle school students, 1 in 5 used marijuana. And so I think it's really important, you know, we're talking about safety, we have to look at the most vulnerable populations, our youth, who has, you know, has been able to access this product despite it being illegal for their age group. And so, you know, it's a duty of our government to protect our future generations, and especially when they're, they're still developing. They're still, their brains are still developing. And there's a lot of studies that show that with the use of substances, substances at such a young age, it affects their development, and has longer-lasting impacts than it does with adults. And so what you can see is that addiction is, they're easily addicted to these products, in addition to just the effect, the overall cognitive effects. And so, you know, when we're talking about an industry, I think we need to ensure responsible industries exist or develop on our island. You know, it's, I think it also supports this industry to ensure that they are protecting the community. I think it's in their best interest to do so. And I think what this amendment does, it ensures that protection. And I don't think we should take this lightly. You know, I know there's already, you know, a lot of our colleagues have left already. Unfortunately, maybe they're listening to this. But I think that is important to, to really take to heart. What we are doing has huge impacts, and we must be guided by the information, the science, and already the, the problems that are existing within our community, especially our youth. I think what this, this amendment does, it really keeps that in mind. I mean, I don't agree with exempting testing, but what this amendment does, it at least mitigates, should this bill pass, it mitigates the lack of testing to our youth, and also to our community at large, because, you know, we're here, we have to also address the issues of, you know, should they enter, should they be admitted to a hospital? You know, our hospitals already are overburdened. And I really believe that prevention is what we need at this point. If we truly are concerned about our citizens, our people, I believe this amendment is very reasonable and protective. And so I really encourage my colleagues to think about what it is they are voting for. Are they voting for the protection of our community? Are they voting to ensure that our youth don't, do not end up in emergency rooms? Or are we thinking about just the nostalgia? You know, we really need to base it on facts. We need, really need to base our policies on evidence and not fantasy. Sizosmosi.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Anyone else on the Speaker Terrell amendment? If not, Speaker, you may close.
Sizosmosi, to my colleagues for speaking on the amendment. One of the things, one of the warnings that's not included in this bill is the warning of the effects of marijuana use on pregnancy or breastfeeding. And that's just one example. But as we said earlier, for sure, flowers and buds, we're going to put warnings on them. No other products will have warnings, and no other products are going to be tested. And when we look at these products, we're talking about manufactured products, the ones that by definition are being changed from flowers and buds to other things. They're being made edible. And this bill, by the way, has nothing to do with hemp. It doesn't control hemp. Hemp is regulated by USDA and the FDA, which allow import. This bill is talking about cannabis under Guam law. Cannabis, where other states have labs, and they test. And in fact, what they're doing is not exempting testing. They're going the other way, and they're adding, they're updating their testing to include more tests because of the new evolution of harms that they are finding, including 2019. Vitamin E acetate was found to damage the lungs of over 3,000 people, left 70 dead. And when they did a study on that, the finding was, the conclusion was, unregulated products. That's what we're going to have here, unregulated products, have been determined to be the proximate cause of all cannabis-related cases within the state of California, and almost all reported cases nationwide. And that's the promise that we made to the people of Guam in previous legislatures, that we are going to legalize this, but we are going to regulate it. And I feel bad that we have some senators in here, if they want to deregulate it for whatever reason, then they should be forthright and put that bill in front of the people of Guam, and not put it under the guise of, let's have a temporary exemption from this lab that we don't have. I find that to be a little bit disingenuous as well. When we are on the brink of having, we have a licensed lab, first of all, about to begin construction. And what we seem to be doing is pulling the rug from, I don't know these people, the name is Pacific Analytical Services. And we're going to pull the rug out from them and say, five years, two years, no more, no more requirement for you. Maybe we're doing this so to allow some other labs to come in and compete. I'm not sure. I'm getting confused now about the intent. I'm getting confused now about the intent. It seemed like it's a 2-year process when really, it might be shorter if we would just let it flow. But by allowing these exemptions, I believe we might impede it. But the worst part is, and I'm so glad that my previous, the previous speaker on this amendment, my colleague, brought back the science and the facts. These are findings, these are not made up. These are why the original bill lists very specifically what these labs are going to test for. That was based on science. And I asked my colleagues to please, if it was important to protect the people of Guam back then, why would it not be important to protect the people of Guam today? What has changed? Somebody making money? We're talking about edibles? We're talking about public health wants to regulate whether we can take honey from the bees and sell it, or whether they have to inspect that? And these products that are listed here, cannabis concentrates, ingestible, transdermal, if I'm, if I understand correct, transdermal means under the skin. My colleague says it's a patch. They also have topical. Those are skin for sure. But we're talking about things that would be regulated in other places. They are regulated. We promised the people of Guam we would keep these regulated. We're not going to put our people at risk by making it seem that the government would not allow it if it was not safe. And this is where I ask my colleagues to think about that. We have Manomko that believe because the government allows it, it must be safe, and young adults as well. Without testing, we can't tell the potency of these products. We cannot properly dosage them. That's a huge risk. So nothing in this amendment would prevent you, if you are legally using products today, from legally using those products tomorrow. It would prevent you from using products that you can't use today, that are high risk, that are not tested. It would prevent those, only those. And the bill, if passed with this amendment, would allow flowers and buds, untested, with So I'm, I'm just asking, if we are trying to really advocate for this industry, then let's be straightforward. Let's, let's acknowledge the risks that were acknowledged in the past. Let's, let's not pretend all of a sudden that they don't exist, or else put in another bill and just say, let's not lab test our stuff, because, you know, our meth has fentanyl, but our weed products, they won't have anything harmful to you because we will be the exemption across the nation. Come on. That's like going backwards. Let's just be reasonable here. We're creating a huge exemption to this industry, perhaps, and I'm not sure, but perhaps at the disadvantage to those who have invested money and are trying to move forward. And I hope that my suspicion is not accurate. But when we say we can't, we can't require testing for these potentially harmful products, and that we will take a risk until there is a lab, I really feel like that's going backwards. Going backwards, contrary to other states, going backwards, contrary to what we have seen evolve in this, in this industry itself, the risks. And it is our responsibility that, that's our only responsibility in this industry. It's like, we said we were going to regulate it, and we're only testing for certain things. It's a minimum. I don't think we need to have an exemption in, just to stand up this industry. The industry is actually moving. So let's, let it do that. I think it's a huge compromise to have flowers and buds untested and like self-atestated that they're not harmful. That's huge. I don't know that that's done anywhere. It's definitely not done with other products that people are going to use in their bodies. This is Massey. So I, I'm asking my colleagues to please, please consider passing this amendment for the safety of the people of Guam. This is Massey.
There has been an objection to this amendment. All those in favor of this amendment, please signify by raising your hand. Motion fails. Speaker Trelawney, you still have a couple of minutes. I understand you have another amendment. I don't have it in front of me. Clerk, can you please give me the amendment?
It's okay, Madam Speaker. That was to add a warning for pregnancy, but honestly, we're not adding warnings on any of the products, according to this bill. This bill removes the requirement that any product containing cannabis has warnings, and it will, can be sold as soon as this bill is signed. This bill removes any type of regulation from any of these products. We're going to regulate flowers and buds a little bit, but we're not going to regulate these concentrates, the infused products, the ingestible products, the non-ingestible cannabis-infused products, the topical products, the transdermal products, free-for-all. I came in here in good faith, thinking maybe it's necessary for a little while, until I learned that we do have a lab licensed, ready to begin, and that there... We've known all along that the risks are high. I mean, some of us, actually, maybe that's where we just disagree, that despite nationwide there being labs and testing done and regulations, that we believe Guam is exempt. I, I, I don't know where that comes from. Maybe in the old days, this is not the old days. This is a day where people who want to make a buck are going to add stuff to your products so that they can make their bucks, and they don't care about the risk to you or your families. You should care about the risk to you and your families, and I am imploring you. Without these amendments, I feel this, this bill puts the people at risk. Again, without these amendments, the bill would say we're unregulating the testing of any products, any products containing cannabis, deregulating the testing of what they might contain, which have been proved to be fatal, which people cannot tell what their potency is, people would not be able to know what they are ingesting, and that damage your body, the additives. We're taking a risk that the flowers and the buds, those are going to be safe because it's Guam. It's like closing our eyes to the science, but we're going to put warnings on those, at the very least, and we're going to have the growers swear that they did not use pesticides. And I just feel bad, because when, when we were debating legalizing cannabis, it was very tough. It was not a slam dunk. The community was divided, and a lot of it along age lines. The Manomko, this is what they were worried about. Are we going to regulate it? Are we going to allow unsafe products? Are we going to be able to control what happens in our workplaces? And I really feel like if we can't agree that the, these potential dangers need to be regulated, or just need to be at least labeled, or they need to be tested before put on the markets, then we are really going back on those promises made, particularly to the Manomko. And this bill, again, does not affect those, I heard some arguments about, oh, we're waiting for the medical. This is totally different than that. This is recreational use cannabis law on Guam. This is Massey, Madam Speaker.
This is Massey. It is 6:00 PM, colleagues. On a motion to recess until 9:30?
I believe I was the last speaker on this bill. Was I?
Yes, you were. So on, would you like to, anyone else wishing, no, there's no other speakers. Everyone has spoken or said. Majority Leader?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I move to recess until 9:00 AM tomorrow.
On that motion, there is an objection to recess till tomorrow at night. All those in favor signify by raising your hand, please. There is an objection. On the motion to recess till 9:00 AM, please signify by raising your hand. Motion fails. Anyone else wishing to speak on the main motion? If not, Senator Parkinson, you may close.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Hold on, I will allow Senator Sabina, do you have a point of information?
Did we vote on your amendment? Did we close on the amendment by the retiring speaker? I didn't catch that.
The amendment failed. It was, it did not muster the votes. Anything else? If not, Senator Parkinson, Senator Sabina will take another point of information from you.
Yeah, thank you. Can we, I make the motion to reconsider the vote.
On the action to reconsider the vote, is there an objection? There is an objection. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. 1, 2, 3, 4. Motion fails. Any other motions? Senator Parkinson, you may close on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I would like to thank my colleagues today for the spirited debate on this bill. I introduced this bill as broadly as I could, and I left it up to the body to decide whether we would keep it as broad as it was, or to fine-tune it to a more limited capacity. Ultimately, the votes to keep it broad instead of limiting it to just flower prevailed. But despite that, I don't think that this is necessarily a bad thing. We had open debate on this floor about the best way to go about it, over several topics and several amendments. We had various options that we went back and forth. Do we do it for 6 months, or do we do it for 5 years? We were able to find a compromise. Do we delay enactment for 3 months, or do we delay it for 6 months? Or do we not delay it at all? We found a happy medium at 3 months. We had only warning labels for flower, and we made that consistent across all those products. These are good changes, and not everybody got everything they want. I sure, I sure didn't get everything I want, but that's the nature of legislation and compromise, is that we put the issue before it, we debate, we take a stab at it, and then we, we vote up and down and move on. Life moves on. And so I don't know if this bill is going to pass. I don't even know if it's going to get to the third reading, but all I know is that we have had a strong debate. And when we think about what we are trying to do, we got to think about what these options lead to. If we vote for this bill, we have the potential to jumpstart an industry that's been stagnant for several years through various bureaucratic delays. But if we vote against this bill, we're basically back to the status quo. We've had some great amendments to this, to delay the implementation of the effective date, because we hear the calls that the labs might be right around the corner. So in, in a nod to that, in deference to that, we delayed the effective date of this to give the labs an opportunity to make good on their promise. And so while, while not everybody is 100% happy with the bill, in terms of what they were able to do or not do, I think that I am very proud of what this body did in terms of really making the sausage and showing that we can be civil and adult and pass and have hard discussions regarding legislation instead of passing the buck. The cannabis industry has been a real passion project of mine, and so for those out there, I want you to know that I never gave up. I always pursued it, and I will continue to pursue and advocate as best as I can, until such a time as somebody else comes forward and lets me pass the baton into the future, just as I have received the baton from the past. The work I've done today would not be possible without the advocacy of the people who came before me, pioneers like Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes and Senator Clint Brugel, and others who would put their names and reputation and their political careers frankly on the line for something that is not always a popular or a sure thing, but it was the right thing to do. And I have the courage I have today because of the example you set for me. So thank you for that being that example of courage for myself and for others. And thank you for all my colleagues for the discussion on this. With that, Madam Speaker, I would like to make a motion to move this bill to the third reading for voting.
Motion to place Bill Number 260-37 COR as amended by the committee and further amended on the floor to the third reading. Is there any objection?
No.
There's an objection. All in favor, please raise your hand. Six, motion fails.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Speaker. At this time, I'd like to recess till 9:00 AM tomorrow.
We'll recess to 9:00 AM tomorrow.